Welcome to the June 13 regular meeting of the Arlington School Committee. Joining us tonight is Marian Nolan from the Arlington Education Association. And we do not actually have the artwork up yet, so nothing to show on that. Public comment, does anybody, Jill?
I would like to...
Come up to the table, yes. So you have three minutes. We generally do not respond to public comment. It may come up later, either in a future agenda item discussion point when we, somebody can request that something be added to a future agenda item or sent to a subcommittee for review.
Okay.
So, go ahead, three minutes, just state your name at the beginning.
Okay, yep, hi everyone, I'm Jill, Jill Beckett, and I am here as a bishop parent tonight because I have heard that there's, I don't know if it's a possibility or a definite fourth grade, fourth kindergarten class coming in, and I am concerned about some of the possible solutions I've heard floated. Being like possibly having a class on the stage, which is not in an auditorium, it is part of the gym, and so I don't see how that can even be entertained for half a second. But then the other possibility is dividing one out of the kindergarten classrooms in half, and the kindergarten classrooms are already fairly small. They're already pretty much full. My son is now in fifth grade, but even back when he was in kindergarten, the classes were 24, 25, and he wasn't in the class that's being proposed to be divided, but I believe they're all about the same size, and I don't actually see how it's possible. So, I'm just hoping that one of the possibilities that you will consider seriously is bringing in some sort of modular or portable classroom, whatever they're called. I really don't, I mean, we have some of the highest class numbers in the town, if not the highest. The cafeteria is very small, very low ceilinged, it's already, the kids are starting quite early and going quite late to cycle them all through. So, for all these reasons, and it would be really unfortunate if we end up having like art in a cart type situation, so I just wanted to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're running early, actually, and our candidate is not here yet. Oh, correct, okay. So, I will skip, we will skip the Human Rights Commission appointment and talk about our special education results. As I think everyone knows, on Tuesday Arlington voters approved both the debt exclusion for the Arlington High School project and the operating override by large margins, 77 percent for the debt exclusion and then 68 percent for the operating override.
Did you say special education results or special election results?
Special election results, sorry, can I speak? Sorry, special election result.
It's all special.
Yes. On behalf of the school committee and Arlington Public Schools, I want to thank the voters for their support. This is really a transformative event for APS. We will have increased funding to meet enrollment growth and begin to address the needs identified in our five-year plan. While the building committee has much more work to do, we are well on our way to a new high school that will meet our enrollment needs, address current standards, and allow us to fulfill our educational vision. Thank you to the building committee and to all the volunteers who helped educate the public about the vote for getting us to this point. Is anybody else, any comments?
I too. I want to thank the Arlington community. This is just a tremendous honor for all of the teachers, students, and staff in the Arlington Public Schools to believe in us and to feel how important it is that we have a new school and also that we have additional revenue to support our operating budget, which we'll talk more about later in the meeting, but the operating override means that we'll have an additional $600,000 next year for positions that had been put on waitlist if we had additional funds. But I know that the building committee is meeting tomorrow evening, and will be moving forward with the next phase. And it's just, there was hialation in the high school the next day, actually probably throughout the whole district feeling very positive about the vote, and so again, thank you.
All right, who else? No? Okay. So, we now have the appointment for the Arlington Humans Rights Commission. Ms. Seuss, do you want to introduce the candidate?
Hi. Yes, I'd like to call Kathleen Rogers up, please, come to the microphone.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
So, just to describe, so we took quite a while, completely my fault, to go through all the applicants. I have to say, we had exceptionally strong candidates. We had eight applicants overall. We did phone interviews, some email, and met with many of the applicants in person. Kathleen, we took a vote this morning, it was actually not unanimous, there was a couple of other very strong candidates who other people liked, but the committee, the Community Relations Committee voted to recommend to the full school committee Kathleen Rogers, she has a, you can correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, 28 years in Arlington?
Yes, or more than that, 28.
28, yes, 28. 19 years at Simmons as chief counsel, has dealt with many issues that the Human Rights Committee deals with, issues, complaints at Simmons, and Title IX issues and so forth, and has just a lot of experience in this. We also liked her strong experience working on boards and collaboratively with colleagues in her professional life, and we thought that would be very helpful for the Human Rights Committee. So, I would like to make a motion to appoint Kathleen to, as our school committee representative to the Arlington Human Rights Committee.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sklen.
Back in the day when this commission was started, and up until relatively recently in history, this has been a little more of a challenging position to fill. I am thrilled that there were so many good applicants, but I just wanted to read to you a comment from one of the people who was not selected in this round, and I quote, "I was very pleased to learn that there was a great deal of interest in the commission at this time. I'm also familiar with Ms. Rogers' work, and she is truly extraordinary. Frankly, if I had known she had submitted an application, I might have withdrawn." So, you got a really great reference from somebody you beat out for the position.
That was actually one of the other very strong candidates.
Yeah.
There was strong support, so.
Yeah, great people looking to do this, and this is one of the reasons why this is such a wonderful community to live in, the people genuinely care about this.
I agree. I think this is a great town, my respect for it has only grown. I think, I'm somebody that, my two children went through Arlington schools from K through 12, and there is no doubt in my mind, as I look at Superintendent Bodie, that you have set them on a path of success. I mean, great success. My son Max graduated 2008, my daughter Sarah, 2018. Max has an exceptional career, and I just, that's because of the town. And I think it's time, I've reached a point, as I told Jennifer, I've reached a point in my life where I now have an empty nest, more time on my hands, and my career is sort of at the end phase. I have time, and I have interest, and I'd like to give back to the town, and I think that the kinds of skills that I've gotten, put in my basket over the last 20-plus years, I'd like to be able to offer to the town if they think that they would be useful. And I would be honored to take this position and do my best.
Anyone else? All right, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being willing to serve.
Thank you for the confidence in Jennifer, and for the nice process. I felt informed and stuff. I'm so happy, thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to hearing from you again later on, to tell us about what's happening in the commission.
I will.
Next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Perhaps, Kristen, you need to wait for a twenty minute...
Okay, sure.
Want to go to lab report?
Sure.
Okay.
You hold your lab report, whichever.
What are we doing now?
So, we're gonna, since we're running early, we're gonna switch around also again and do the lab report next. Yeah.
Oh, it's an Excel sheet, yeah. Oh, that was the last one. Oh, I didn't...
Can we go on to this and just take it out?
Yeah, yeah. No, decided I don't want to do that. We could, I just don't have the...
All the timings.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Were you waiting for Brian and Matthew, is that it?
I'm sitting here on top.
Do you want to just... We're early, we're early, so.
Oh, yeah, I guess we're...
You're not until seven.
Well, Principal Maringer also has a, his daughter's getting an award, so he's going there, racing here.
Oh, wow.
He says to me, he told me the same.
Is your voice good?
He said he just had to distract them.
Do you want the lights?
Yeah. I don't know that you can be able to see that very well, regardless.
Yeah, I think most of us have it, in front of us anyways.
So, last week, we had presented some updates on the work that we have done over the year, as well as just kind of giving you an overview of special education, and we had concluded with going a little bit into the lab program evaluation. I think in the interest of time, we split it up into two separate presentations, so it could go a little bit more in-depth into the results of, and recommendations of the lab program evaluation. I do, as I mentioned last week, want to note that I think if, if we're reading this report as a report card on special education, we are missing the intent of the evaluation and the recommendations. This was a review of inclusionary practices across the district, and for that reason, it's recommendations for the district to consider, both in general ed and special ed, as we talked a little bit about how we have a, we all have a responsibility for these students. So, I tried to condense the report into a visual, so that you could see which areas, the categories in which they had made recommendations and findings, and then I tried to match the findings to the recommendations, and then highlight for you the action steps we have taken this year, and some of the proposed action steps for next school year, and finally just, you know, indicating, you know, where that effort will lie, both if it's, you know, general ed and special ed, or if it's really a special ed initiative. So, a number of the recommendations and findings involve the student support team process. Across different schools, we call it different things. TST, teacher support team, TAT, teacher assistance teams, child study team, but in general, under the regulations, we call it student support team. Probably one of the recommendations would be to get consistent on what we're calling it across the district. And so, for this year, we created a shared drive in which all schools could access SST materials, protocols, and resources. Looking into next year, we've already registered a district team for the DESE MTSS Institute, student support team being a part of that as well. And this past year, we sent a district team, or we were accepted into the S3 Academy, which was a joint program by the Rennie Center and the DESE, and Ms. Nolan was on that team along with others from the district, in which the second half of the year, we attended five workshops with the Rennie Center around designing student support systems. Other recommendations, and again, there's multiple findings or recommendations, so I realize this is very text-heavy and dense, which why it doesn't read well on the screen. Several of those recommendations were around the co-teaching model of instruction, and these are areas that I do feel, and actually Dr. Janger and I were just talking this morning, around the work that we need to do jointly between general ed and special education around our co-teaching efforts. This year, we have been sending, and I mentioned last week that we have been sending general ed and special education teaching pairs to off-site co-teaching workshops and trainings, and for next year, we are identifying a coach to provide onsite coaching and consultation. One of the other things that's recommended in the evaluation is that we, again, look at models of co-teaching and greater understanding and consistency of what those models look like. In some of the observations, they observed what happens in many cases where the general ed teacher takes more of a lead role and the special education teacher is filling in more of that role of a paraprofessional, so we really want to make sure that we're utilizing our professional staff to their maximum potential. And so, the coach will be working with those teams here onsite next year. We also have recommendations around the caseloads in the classroom, so this year, we, at the high school, we addressed those caseloads by opening more sections of co-teaching. Next year at Gibbs, we're already looking at the class assignments to address that balance in the co-teaching classrooms, as well as making sure that we provide time for planning. This year, the high schools already had that in place, kind of due to the masterful scheduling of Mr. McCarthy, and as we look at the schedule next year at Gibbs, we're already also planning to make sure that those co-planning blocks are a reality. The elementary schedule, should that go into action, will also provide for the co-planning that is crucial to any co-teaching model. I think when we think of co-teaching, we want to make sure that we are talking about co-planning, co-instructing, and co-assessing, and it's not just what we're doing in that moment in front of students, but the planning and the assessing as well. In the area of professional development, which again, I think falls equally on general education and special education, is around supporting students, and you heard a little bit last week about, you know, being able to implement accommodations, provide universally-designed instruction in the general education classrooms. This year, the AEA Joint Committee on Special Education, which we've had for two years now, focused their efforts, we meant monthly, in collecting and analyzing district-wide data on staff needs for professional development and training, and we have now shared that with each building, so that they can take that information ideally to their leadership teams to think about how they're using staff meetings, other times that are available to look at meeting staff needs around what they've identified as areas they want further development in. And then, Dr. McNeil, also, we have a committee planning the PD day in November. The focus of that planning is equity and inclusion, so we are already working with a team. We've met, what, four times this year?
Three or four times.
Three or four times this year. We're meeting over the summer, and we'll be meeting in the fall to plan that day as well. Also, each year, I meet with, during new teacher orientation, we have a special ed time for all teachers, not just special education teachers, and we'll be looking at how we use that time to talk with teachers and lead them through some practices on supporting students in inclusion, including how to utilize paraprofessionals, which is a later recommendation. That'll be a bit of a shift from what we have done in the past with that time, where we've kind of been very strictly technical assistance to new teachers around special education, and this is really going to focus more on practices. Continuing with the teachers, teaching assistance, professional development recommendations, I mentioned and shared last week, the training that we did last year, over the course of this past year with the TAs, and we are planning with our BCBAs and social workers to deliver PD during that early release time next year, related to continuing that, implementation of behavior plans, data collection, report writing, de-escalation, and behavior management. And we're working with the trainers, our in-district trainers, who do our therapeutic crisis intervention, to help us lead some of that training for TAs next year. Continuing with the professional development recommendations, they noted that overall, we need more basics training, or the training on basics for special education. Again, at the beginning of each year, we have time with staff at the building level, the first day is primarily mandatory trainings. We created a more in-depth, longer, training around the basics of special education that each staff member is required to sign off on having participated in. This goes along with the trainings we do around restraints, FERPA, mandated reporting, but this one is specific to special education. Some other things we implemented this year were around communication, so whether you want to call it, it's not really a blog per se, but there's weekly communication to special ed staff regarding different state and federal regulations that have, that we share that impacts the work that they do. We'll be continuing that communication next year, and we are already planning for our legal counsel to meet with our administrative team during our August retreats to do training as well. The recommendations around team meetings is how they characterize them, but it's a broad list of recommendations, but it was largely around looking at strategies to maximize efficiencies in communication within the department. I mentioned last week how we created our communication ladders and hierarchical structures to help, you know, demonstrate that visually. I've always met with principals monthly, with the coordinators, we'll continue to do that. This year, we also implemented quarterly meetings with the related service providers by each department, so in addition to the early release time once a month, we have quarterly meetings in which the OTs or the SLPs can meet with special ed administrators to discuss topics specific to their area. One of the recommendations from the report was, in some schools, we have the practice of the special ed department having a weekly school-based team meeting. We can't require this as part of the AEA contract, so I think in places where it was in practice, and people have been engaging in it for several years, they have found it very useful, we will continue to encourage teams to look for those opportunities, as they are often very valuable. I just saw it type on. The teaching assistants, which were referenced earlier in professional development, there were specific recommendations around how you identify when a student would require either a one-to-one or TA support. So, this year, we began a review of rubrics that can help teams make decisions. This coming year, we're going to pilot two different tools with our educational teams to see which ones are the most useful to team members in making those database decisions. I mentioned this already, the organizational chart, communication chart, and I mentioned this last week, a recommendation around memorializing the written procedures for transition. We've done this in the special ed department, I know Mr. Maringer and Ms. DeFrancisco had created a very detailed transition between Gibbs and Odison, if that's in writing, that's something that we want to make sure that we capture in writing, so it doesn't exist with, just Ms. DeFrancisco and Mr. Maringer. In the special ed department, we'll be working on creating the written procedures for the middle to high school transitions, which have been in place for years, but they were not in writing. I know you would ask for a more in-depth presentation perhaps next school year around the work that we've been doing specifically with Dr. Orkin, Melissa Orkin, out of Tufts Language and Literacy Center. This is tied to the recommendations around evidence-based, especially designed instruction, and we have been working with her, this is our third year working with her. Again, last week, I mentioned or showed you some of the trainings we've had. We just finished this week, three days of Framing Your Thoughts, which is writing a specially designed, specially designed instruction for writing, and all of our elementary learning specialists and special education teachers, as well as our speech and language pathologists, completed those three days of training. And next year, we'll continue to work with Dr. Orkin on interpreting assessment data, developing reader profiles, intervention and designing instruction, as well as writing goals and objectives for literacy. And Dr. Orkin is also going to be meeting with our administrative team at one of the retreat days. There was a recommendation, again, under evidence-based practice around data collection procedures. There is a suggestion that it should be a unified data collection system. I know we have a data bank for the district, but we don't necessarily have a data collection tool. I think it would be extremely difficult to have one tool to collect data on all IEP goals, since they're highly individualized, but we will be exploring some of the commercial products that are out there for taking an objective and creating a data collection tool for it, and comparing those to what we can create locally. There were recommendations clustered under the program development area. As I mentioned last week, you know, the recommendation is to further develop and expand program options. We presented on the expansion we're going to be doing at the Summit Program at Odison, as well as expanding the program from Odison to AHS, the Compass Program, and continuing to work with Dr. Elizabeth Keith out of Leslie University. She'll be going to Stone Hill next year, but she's going to continue to work with us on both the REACH program at the high school and again at Stratton. And there were recommendations about establishing entrance and exit guidelines for services and programs. I shared last week what we were doing with our related service providers, using that logic model to create those, what we would call guidelines, not criteria, and we'll be continuing that work with the related service providers next year during our early release time. We worked with WDECO on that, and we'll continue to work with them during our time next year. Similarly, this other recommendation was around, specifically during the evaluation, interviews with staff, they identified that staff members were often saying, "Oh, I think we need a language-based program in the district." However, when the evaluators reviewed the district data, that was not indicated, but they do recommend that we continue to review our data to see which programs we need to develop. As I've mentioned, our REACH program, our student, programs serving students with autism spectrum disorders is our largest program in district and growing, so that is a program that our data suggests we do need to continue to develop and look into and possibly expand as those numbers continue to expand. But also, we know that our out-of-district placement trends continue to be for therapeutic programs, both at the middle and high school, hence some of the work we're doing at Summit to expand that program. And at Gibbs, next year, we're going to be establishing a Tier Two program, which again, is a general ed initiative, but working with the special ed department... is a general ed initiative, but working with the special ed department and the, using the logic model to develop that programming. I think you'll see too, that in the budget request for additional elementary principals, you know, there was a recommendation in here around making sure that it's clear who is interviewing and support, or who is supervising and evaluating staff and supporting those staff. You know, I think as building principals have less of the day-to-day operations responsibilities that maybe a assistant principal will be helping with, that'll certainly allow principals time for more of the instructional leadership and supervision and evaluation responsibilities at the elementary level. There was one finding, they didn't tie any specific recommendations to it around caseloads, more that staff had expressed concerns around caseloads and equity across roles or buildings around their caseloads, as well as how we use our school psychologists and that. So you've seen, this past year, we did increase special ed staffing primarily at Gibbs for the opening of Gibbs, and then the impact that it left Odison. So there were additions at those schools, as well as the high school receiving some positions. And then next year, we'll be adding a learning specialist to Stratton, as well as the increase to the teacher at Summit at Odison and Compass at the high school, and increasing OT and SLP FTEs at Hardy, Thompson, and Gibbs. So, kind of tried, it was a lot to try and condense visually, so. Questions?
Mr. Hayner?
How many staff members have physical restraint training?
So our TCI, therapeutic crisis intervention, is a four, full-day training to do the entirety of it. So it's broken up into both verbal de-escalation and then the nonviolent physical restraint. I don't have the exact number, but at this point, we've had, we've trained over 200 staff in part or all of the.
I apologize. I don't mean to make this sound like I'm trying to trap you in anything. My concern is that the rules and regulations and the procedures have changed dramatically since I was a teacher, and in my opinion, for the better. But the, they're constantly in flux, this training and stuff, do you, I assume you.
It's annual. So all, whether or not you take TCI, we are annually required to train staff at the beginning of the year around crisis intervention steps that you can take to de-escalate, and then our responsibilities around administering restraint. So that training happens annually. When they last updated the regulations in 2014, we made the changes to that training. Those who get the actual intervention to intervene, that's annual, it's an annual renewal.
My concern is that, I think you mentioned that it was like on the first day.
Not TCI, no. If you're.
The other part of it.
Yeah.
The other part. My concern is that on that first day, there's very little focus by staff. They're anxious to get to the rooms and stuff. I'm hoping, and I realize to all of you, that time is of the essence and it's trying to put three pounds into a 50-pound, I mean, a two-pound bag is very difficult. But this is something that I think that is important to be done on, not just on a one-time basis, but to be reminding people of it and working with it. I assume you're doing that and I.
Sure, yeah. And actually, we have to have people trained by October 1st, at least one person in each building in the actual restraint training. That's part of the regulations. So I think principals, you can jump in if anyone wants to run to the mic. I know sometimes you take those train, those required trainings and at least at the elementary level may divide them up over staff meetings through the first month of school. So not.
Good.
To your point, you're not getting your FERPA, your mandated reporter training, your, where to get your keys and whatnot. Thanks.
These are things that I, I think that should be discussed with staff on a regular basis to keep them fresh in mind, that you're not asking them to remember back on that first day before everybody came in. Thank you.
I want to emphasize that because I think that's.
I want to emphasize, I just gave Allison a list of everyone that's trained. So we have a cohort of individuals that are trained at every building. So I don't want to send a message that no one's trained at, and there's any gaps in that, so.
I, what I was looking for is exactly what you just said, and but at the same time, assuring the public that this is not done in isolation, it's an ongoing program and supporting the staff that, to provide a safe environment for everyone.
Absolutely. And we have those people that are in place this year at every building.
Great.
Ms. Seuss?
Yeah, I just have some process questions. So how often is this review done? What, is there a follow-up to see if you're implementing the recommendations? When's the next review?
So this was something we privately contracted. We are required to annually review our programs, and you can do that through different means. So some of the work that we're doing with the consultants to, you know, as I mentioned, Dr. Orkin in her support and review of our REACH programming. Next year is our mid-cycle review for the coordinated program review, which is now tiered-focused monitoring. And that has switched from a six-year cycle to a four, well, it'll be every other year, but two years is the former mid-cycle, and then four years would be the full review. So they'll be onsite. We don't have the dates yet, but we did our record review self-assessment this spring, and they'll be onsite again next year.
Okay, right, right, I'm familiar with that. Okay, so this is, this particular review was a initiated, was an independent initiated review. Okay, great, thanks.
Anybody? Ms. Morgan?
So I think this is, it's helpful for me. I like charts and columns and boxes because I guess, you know, some of this, some of the things that happened this year to me, like it seems like there was some PD, which is good, and some workshops which are good. You know, I think creating a shared drive for schools seems like a good idea. You know, I'd like to, you know, continue to move through, you know, I'm, I'm more interested in the SY 1920 actions because those seem a little bit more robust than, than what we saw for this year. And I understand that a lot of this year was planning for next year, which I think is good. So I, I definitely want to, you know, have a presentation, you know, or I, I would like to, to talk more about these pieces as we go into next year so that we know what we're doing.
Sure. And Dr. McNeil and I talked about how this work has to be shared among the departments. You know, the curricular directors, you know, student support team is actually something that would happen prior to a special ed evaluation. Co-teaching, obviously, right in its definition as a combination of general ed and special ed. And so I think, you know, looking at the individual steps, both special ed and general ed are taking to implement that would be valuable.
Yeah, definitely.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
I wonder, as part of this review, if they did any analysis for looking for kind of bright spots where a group is doing really well at something and then, you know, identified it, and then, you know, the next step would be trying to get it mimicked in other parts of the district.
Sure. So I shared with you last week, and it's convenient that, right, I have my computer here. And so they did, you know, have commendations for the district and, I'm sorry, why is that not standing? Sorry. Can you, is that enough for you to see at least? That, so we mentioned that the high school co-teaching model with that common planning block was already in place. That's something we're looking to expand. As I mentioned, at Gibbs, we're already planning for that, and that's something I know that I look at Brian, I know Maureen Murphy, who is the scheduling wizard, is trying to make that happen. Also, those teaching ratios were something that was commended, and the various use of technology. I think when I mentioned, we're looking at different tools for data collection. They recognized that we had, the Google School format was one place at the elementary level that they observed a positive practice for data collection. So those are some of them that they noted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I have a few questions, some comments. So it's a difficult report, the way they structured the recommendations, because there's a lot of narrative in there that's not purely a recommendation, but sort of more discussion about what a, what a best practice may be. So it's hard to actually just pull out each individual recommendation. But there, there definitely are some that, that I'm not seeing on your chart, like just pointing one, for example, under team meetings, establishment of an assessment handbook.
Yes. So when, as you just noted, it is very tough to pull out. So I could have put all of those in a line, and you would have had like 109 lines if I tried to take each one. But there are some recommendations that actually honestly came in the form of blanket recommendations. We have an assessment handbook, so they didn't ask to see it. And when we got that recommendation, I was surprised because we have one. But also, most of that now is also on a Google site. It's, you know, no longer a, we have a binder that I can pull out, but most of those things exist in electronic format. They didn't review. And so that specific recommendation you have is not something that we, as a district, are going to be attacking in the next year ahead. Also, to be frank, each professional, and according to the regulations, gets to select their evaluation tools. So the recommendation that there be required tests that each adminis, that each provider administer goes against the regulations around allowing them to select their evaluation tools and how they should be administering assessment, digging in deeper. I'm looking at Ms. Nolan as a speech and language pathologist who also operates under an ASHA license, which requires her to use multiple forms of assessment. And frankly, if I told her she had to do a CTOP every time she administered a test, she might not be very happy with that recommendation.
It just may not be appropriate for the student.
Okay. I just was pulling that one out as an example.
Yes, no, there is. You've identified it's very difficult to find a way to represent all of that in a chart.
Right. But I, but I do think there's, just as I read it and then I saw your, your chart today, again, I was expecting sort of a more point-by-point review of, yes, this, we already have an assessment handbook, or this is not a good recommendation because it doesn't meet the regulations and that kind of thing.
Maybe in the fall.
So, yeah, if, if, just, just to make sure that we are, you know, either comprehensively addressing what they've, they're suggesting, or we are moving forward with different things because we have other priorities, all that is fine, but I just want to make sure we're not missing something. I, you know, I do think as a committee, we want to come back to the student support team, RTI, MTSS. It's a big subject that we haven't talked about for several years, since I've been on the committee. So I do think we should do that in the fall, and they did identify some things here. So as far as, as co-teaching, they make this point about the co-teaching model of instruction versus the in-class model of support. And it says that we're moving towards the co-teaching model of instruction, which I wasn't necessarily aware of. Would, would you make that distinction or?
I, I mean, I think anytime you have a professional staff in the classroom, they, they should, I mean, their recommendation, and as I mentioned, when they say, you know, that in some of the co-teaching observations, they didn't see that evidence-based practice because the co-teacher, the special educator, was taking on a role that appeared to be more like a paraprofessional, where the general ed teacher was leading instruction. In co-teaching, there's generally about four models you can go back and forth from. And some days, it might be that one person's leading instruction and one person's supporting it, but then you might do station teaching where you're both teaching a different concept and the students are rotating through that. And that's not just at elementary level. I think people think station teaching is an elementary thing. That can very well happen at a middle and high school level. There might be parallel teaching where both teachers are teaching the same content, but to smaller groups. And so I, that's what we're looking forward to having the consultant work with us on so that the special educators is, you know, being, you know, a professional in the classroom. And, you know, we have paraprofessionals who can do things like redirect back to task or, you know, check for understanding, but we're really looking for our special educators to also be, you know, co-leading instruction.
Yeah, so I do think that, I mean, they have, they identified the need, we're meeting the need probably in a slightly different way than they've, they're suggesting, which is fine. But I, but I do think we need a little bit more clarity around where we're going with.
Yeah, I think we're focusing, I would say, if you're going to ask where we're focusing co-teaching, I would say at six through 12 currently. We haven't had an elementary schedule that would allow for that, given the way that, you know, fourth grade math is not taught at the same time and across all three classrooms. And so that didn't allow for it. I think after we get the schedule in place and get that established and get that, you know, we could move in that direction. But I would say that we're definitely focusing on six through 12.
Great. So again, as, as we look at the report and the recommendations, you know, they say the district needs to review current co-teaching and in-classroom support practices, blah, 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 blah. And then you have these sort of, these two very brief items about what you're going to do for that one. Probably you have, you have a more comprehensive plan for, for co-teaching. It's just not written down and presented in a nice.
Yeah, well, and we have the consultant that we're working with. We're going to be doing a lot of the planning this summer, so we have not actually sat down with that individual. And I imagine she too is going to be doing some observation before planning what that will look like.
Great. All right, great, thank you. Mr. Hayner?
I'd just like to add, co-teaching is not something that can happen overnight. This takes a long time to develop a, a professional collegial relationship between both sides so that it, the ideal spot is when it comes that I'm anticipating what you're going to do, and I'm working at it, and we're thinking the same way. And, and it's constantly changing because the IEPs are constantly changing from year to year. But that relationship over a period of time, and it's going to take that time. The district seems to be going in the direction, in a very positive direction, but it's, I, I'd love to see it happen overnight, but it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time. We have to be patient. I'd look forward to seeing more yearly reports, possibly having the teachers come in that develop these relationships, and, and we can appreciate more what's going on instead of talking about it in isolation.
Sure. And I actually, you know, I'm looking to Dr. Jangor because there's been, the practice has been established for quite a while here at the high school, and we have some of those relationships. And again, to Dr. Allison Ampe's point, you know, Dr. Allison Ampe's point, it was an area that was commended when they did observe that the high school practices were strong around that. And we do have some team partnerships that have been together for a couple of years where you might see more of that in play.
I mean this in support, not criticism.
Yeah.
We'd love to come back in October and present on that, I think.
Great.
Just one last comment.
I do think at the elementary level though, that as we've added the more, you know, more learning specialists now, three per building, they are pushing in more, but they're not quite certain to your models of what they should be doing. It's all sort of experimental. So, you know, to the extent we have a consultant who can help with that going forward, I think the teachers want the support.
I agree. And I also, you know, I think the work that we're doing with Dr. Orkin, while very specific to reading and writing, also will help in that regard.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, so are we ready to go back to opening time?
So we're going to invite all three principals, Dr. Jangor, Maringer, Ms. DeFrancesco.
Is there anything on several?
What the committee was asking when we had the last discussion about this is for, for the principals to have some discussion, some planning in their own building, and just some overview of what are some of the things that we are going to need to do next year to, to do a start time change. And so you've received in your packet a report, there was a joint report from Mr. Maringer and Ms. DeFrancesco, and then the one from the high school, Dr. Jangor. So I don't know who's going to go first to talk about.
First, because I stole their model.
First of all, thank you for having us here tonight. Kristin and I have talked a lot about this, and we just wanted to make sure you understood that we endorse a later 8:30 start. So we think the benefits of the extra sleep for kids who are at the middle level is significant and shown in studies. So we are very much for an 8:30 start right now. We both feel that we would want to start at the same time. We'd want the Gibbs and the Odison to start both at 8:30. We would appreciate the 8:30 start more than an 8:15, which we. We would appreciate the 8:30 start more than an 8:15, which we, we're not sure makes as much sense only to have 15 more minutes. We'd like the half an hour. We look at, at some of the benefits. Obviously, it's been talked about here before. We had some high school kids who came to present. I think many of us know surrounding districts who are pushing back at times, and we're really looking at the sleep patterns that we would think would first and foremost benefit our students and their education. Kristin has a more specific benefit that I think would, she'll talk about, and then we'll bring up some of the challenges that we see as we move forward to having a later start time. So I know there's more of a transportation bus issue, so Kristin knows a little bit more about that.
Thank you. Again, I echo Brian, thank you for having us back. You know, we talked about wanting this to be a really thoughtful rollout. And so hopefully tonight, as we go through some of these benefits and some concerns that we have, we can start pushing toward that end of that thoughtful rollout. Brian talked a little bit, or introduced the, the fact that Gibbs has got quite a, it's quite a moving machine of buses coming in the morning to make sure that all kids who are living, you know, far enough to, away to qualify for bus, and also some kids who are actually paying to be on that bus because they want to be bused to school. We have some rotations. We have two buses showing up at 7:30 in the morning, and then those two buses go back out, and then they come back in and they, and so we've got kids, you know, arriving at all sorts of different times, which means we certainly need to make sure they've got supervision and where are they? And once they're dropped off at our doorstep, they're, you know, they're ours. So with this 8:30 start, we would actually be able to get those four buses moving and dropping off at the same time. So kids would arrive at school at the same time. They wouldn't be sitting and waiting for school to start. You know, there certainly would be enough time for them to get some breakfast if that's something they needed to do, but it would make the morning so much smoother. So that was something that was really appealing to me and also Steve Angelo, who I spoke with, the director of transportation. He actually already had it all planned out. He was very excited and hoping that we were going to go push toward that 8:30 time. That really are, those are really our two biggest benefits, the sleep benefit and the transportation benefit for Gibbs. I think probably why you don't see people jumping on this more quickly, even though they know it's a good thing, is because it starts to interfere with logistics of other things that you don't even really think about until you start digging a little bit. So just as we started to think about it, here are some of those things that have come up. There are more coming up for, for me at Gibbs, because our kids are a little younger. But Brian will, I'm sure, have some things to, to add as, as we move along the items. The first is that working parents are currently dropping their sixth graders off at Gibbs as early as 7:00 AM before they head to work. Now, sometimes those kids will hang outside and the weather is fine and they can do that. Sometimes when the weather is not fine, if someone gets there early enough that knows they're going to be able to keep an eye on them, they have them come in. We are not changing our parents' work start times when we change our time to 8:30. And so my concern is that I'm still going to get kids dropped off as early as 7:00 in the morning. So what is that going to look, feel and sound like? Are we going to provide something for that? You know, how, how are we giving parents support as we, as we push that time to 8:30? I'm, I think that was all I wanted to say for that one. Many of our teachers are traveling from a long distance. That's actually for both of us, and I know Matt will probably echo this when he, he talks. Coming from a long distance, they're usually arriving a little, they, they plan their commute, so they're leaving a little earlier, and they would need to continue to do that. If they pushed their, their departure time from home up to, to meet that start time, they would be stuck in so much traffic. And so we worry that that won't be appealing to, to our teachers that we've really worked hard to professionally develop and who are really adding to our, to our students' education. And so we, we really need to think about what we're going to do about that. It's, it's the same on the other end of the day, actually. We've added to their afternoon commute if they're staying later. So we want to be thoughtful about, about how we help our, our great teachers that are going to be working with that. Our students who are members of the MEKO program addition, this is another addition to the traffic issue, they're making their way to us during very currently heavy Boston traffic. So, you know, they would also need to maintain that earlier time. If we were to move them and we think about that start time being later, our bus actually, our students actually ride the elementary bus. They do not ride the middle and the high school bus. And I checked in with Margaret, there's a couple of reasons for this. Margaret is the director of MEKO. Number one, there's not enough room on the middle and the high school bus. And number two, we felt like our responsibility to this transitional sixth grade middle school that we've built, putting the sixth graders on a bus with high school and, you know, older middle school kids was not really in keeping with that philosophy. So riding the elementary school bus is really where we want them to be. The elementary school's not changing their start time. So that would also, you know, really be something we'd have to take a look at. The current teacher contract states that after-school meetings cannot contractually begin after 2:45 PM. So if we go to the, and the way that the language reads, it's almost as if even if we were to start after then and, and still make the meeting go until that contractual, contractual end time, it, it still wouldn't be okay. And so as we look at that, we think about all of that PD and all of those department meetings and all of the building meetings that we're having after school on Tuesdays. We would eliminate them. We would have to, if, if, if we don't find a solution, we would have to eliminate them. The only ones we'd be able to maintain would be when we have a, an early release, we'd be able to do those because our, our, our finish time would be 1:00. So we're really concerned about that. We, we need to think about how we're going to remedy that before we start to take away, some of the PD that Allison actually just talked about, some of the co-teaching work that we're going to be doing and, and the culturally proficient work that we're going to be doing. That, that's the time that we get to meet with our staff to do that work. So that is obviously a big concern, not just for me, but for, for Brian and, and for Matt also. And I think, you know, we, when we talked about this initially, we really wanted this to be a thoughtful rollout. And so this is just part of the process, I think, in making it a thoughtful rollout. I don't think those things necessarily are things going to stop us from doing it, but they're things that we need to think about. We also brainstormed, when the three of us met and talked a little bit about a subcommittee, maybe of the, of the school committee that might receive some of these, some of this information from all the different stakeholders. I just scratched the surface here. So we would really want to be able to take some of that time to actually flesh out. Maybe it involves surveys, maybe it involves, you know, Margaret doing some research with bus companies, maybe it involves us thinking about how we're going to meet with the, the AEA. That, someone's going to need to be receiving all of that information. So we, we thought it might be a good idea to have that through a subcommittee so that those people could come and visit that subcommittee and say, here's what we've got, here's what we found so far on each of these issues. So in summary, we hope that this has helped frame our support of an earlier start time while highlighting the concerns and the challenges it will bring. Our desire for a thoughtful rollout will require a careful plan around these challenges. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that is, one of the biggest concerns is kind of contractual language. And I think we've all talked about not wanting to give up faculty meetings in which we're talking about the goals that our schools have. You know, I know other schools have gone to morning meetings or shortening one day. I think there's a lot of solutions, but I guess as the contract is written right now, instead of saying 15 minutes after the, you know, the end of the day, it gives a specific time, which really hamstrings us in terms of kind of making those adjustments. So part of this is going to be working with the union if, if we're going to later start times to make sure that we keep some of these things along, so.
Thank you. So most of the things that have been covered at the middle school, at least the, especially the list of details, are issues and concerns that are similar at the high school. So I'm not going to go over as many, some of them in detail. I'll sort of point to them as I go through. But I think one thing to reframe, there's a joke I often make when people ask me about things, and I say, well, you know, I control many things, but time and space are above my pay grade. Right? They are not movable things. And if you really want to get into stuff that's contentious, you talk about time. But when we think about the way we use time in schools, what we're really talking about is values. Right? It's what things we value. We organize and, and spread out the time based on the things we want to do, which things we need to cover, which things we need to do. And many of the things that I think we've talked about in this context as challenges are also opportunities in this conversation. Because if we're going to be thoughtful about what we're doing, which is we are thinking about the way we use our school time in a way that is better for teaching and learning, then I think we want to go focus on what are our goals. So one, in a simple way, you come to me and say, start the high school at 8:30 the year after next. I will tell you, for most schools compared to us, we've been thinking about it for three years. We've worked out many of the major issues. And we don't have a lot of the constraints other communities have, at least for the high school, around transportation and distance to schools. So a lot of it is a lot easier. But the issues that become important are the ones that have to do with our real goal, which is to positively impact students' sleep time and teaching and learning. And so if we want to have the goals that we want, we can't set up a situation where the kids are still coming to school at 7:00, or where our teachers are not able to get here at a reasonable time, or they're coming at 7:00 and they're getting home at 9:00. It's important to note that the cost of living around here has become an issue in teacher recruiting. Every year, we are losing a few teachers who we would like to keep because they can move out of the area and they can live much better in a different school setting. And so taking that into account to keep the really excellent teachers we have that give us the excellent outcomes we have is going to be really important. So I think the biggest thing we want to do is focus on our goals, which is students' sleep time and a positive impact on teaching and learning, and set up a process so that we are not doing this on the backs of people who are least likely to do it. It's an unfunded mandate to say to a teacher, pay for two hours more childcare in order for us to have later start times. If it's a value that we have as a community, then we have to think about the way we're going to do that as a community. So going through. One thing I think we want to think about as we go into this is we have, both of us have put sections on the research. The American Pediatric Association and the CDC say that start time is an issue. They say you should focus on allowing students to have, based on when teenagers go to sleep, between 10:00 and 11:00, eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep, which gets us very close to the window in our current area, which is part of why, although we've been thinking about it for a long time, we were not urgently coming here, at least at the high school, and saying, we need to make this move. We were already within the window, which was targeted. But there's a value to moving it later. But I think the community needs to see that because the community is going to be asked to support it, either through funding through the schools or changes that they have to make in other programs and in their own arrangements. If you look at the second page of the material I sent you, we, you can see a list of the Middle Sex League schools. Those are the schools that made the commitment to move to the 8:00, 8:30 window. Half of us are now within that window. So again, it's not something that is happening automatically across the area. So looking at planning across the high school, one of the first things you'd worry about would be athletics. To be honest, it's really not that much of an issue. We've been talking about it in the Middle Sex League at this point for a while. We've worked out ways to plan things. It shifts things a little bit later. We can work on it. Most of the impact on athletics is actually not going to be on the high school. It's going to be on everybody else in the town, which I talk about later. I have a section here where I talk about teacher hours and commuting time. And I don't think that's something minor. I think it's something people really need to understand. Since this has come out, I've had multiple excellent teachers come to me close to tears multiple times because they're not sure if they'll be able to stay here if we don't accommodate the way that they're living. That said, I think we can do it if we're thoughtful about it. Most of those teachers are arriving right now around 7:00, 7:30, because it's not possible to arrive in Arlington at quarter to 8:00, coming from where they're coming from. You're either an hour early or you're an hour late. And so for those teachers, they're still going to arrive at that time, and they really want to get out of here by about 3:30. If we think about ways to keep the teacher day between 8:00 and 3:30, and not that often after 3:00, then we can accommodate teachers. How do we do that? One, we sit down with the teachers' union and think about if there's a better way we can all use our time. The fact that there is a constraint within the contract is an advantage. It forces us all to the table. That said, if they don't want to, we can end school a little bit early, one day a week in order to have those meeting times or start it a little bit late. Within the high school schedule, I've already done multiple versions of this. I put one of them in the, in the original draft of this, and Kathy said it will just confuse everybody if you give them a specific schedule, because there's about 50 different ways we could do that schedule. We can do a schedule within the amount of time within those constraints, depending on what our goals are. So that's something I think is really important, that we really sit down and have those conversations. And so then the last, the list of things that, similar to what Kristin and Brian talked about, the various other impacts, they're written down here. I'll list them very quickly, and I think we need to talk about them later. But the big point is going to be for us as a whole to figure out a process. Who's talking to whom? Who's gathering the information? And where are those decisions going to be made? So as I go through, library hours, kids arriving early and leaving late. It's an opportunity. Somebody's got to pay for it. Somebody's got to decide it's okay. MEKO program, the MEKO program students probably will not get as much of the benefit of the later start time because, like our teachers, they got to beat the traffic. So if we don't want to put them at a disadvantage, then we need to think about ways of providing other programming and support that compensates for that. If you look at the research on sleep time, the fact that our MEKO students have to leave for school about an hour earlier than everybody else and spend two hours a day on the bus would account for a significant difference, almost a full grade, in their performance for getting any other characteristic of the students. And so if we're putting that on them, we have to think of other ways to more efficiently support them. Youth sports. If we're moving the start time for high school and we move it back half an hour, we don't want the impact to be that all of our elementary school students are going to bed an hour later, which is not in keeping with their sleep studies. So we have to also consider communicating with those programs in a timely fashion so that they can make adjustments. Family childcare, again, if we have to extend the way our childcare program works, that's going to create a problem in terms of costs. If that problem in terms of costs becomes something that goes to the teacher, that's another unfunded mandate done on the backs of our staff. And family, I'm sorry, the other, I cut them out of order. The other point about family childcare is right now, if I have an older brother at the high school, my older brother can rush on down to Bishop or to Hardy, and the kid's going to hang out for about 15, 20 minutes in the gap. And they'll, that's going to be okay. Now it's going to be 45 minutes. In 45 minutes, kids hanging around the school, if we don't want those students to be unsupervised, we need to figure out a way either to have parent support or for us to support that buffer time. And then last but not least, the Arlington High School is not just a place where the high school takes place, but a huge number of community education programs take place. And so if we want to think about those being pushed later potentially, we have to have a conversation with that program to think about the impact on programming and on revenues to the district. And they're probably things we haven't thought of yet. So I think the process is going to be the most important part to make this effective. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Sues?
So I just want to remind you guys and remind the public that in 1718, we tried really hard to get a committee together. We were told, and I, I was getting this, you know, through superintendent and other people, that nobody wanted to sign up for this committee. And we were told that, you know, teachers were very much in favor of this, there wasn't a problem. And so I asked multiple times about the establishment of this committee. So just to remind you that we are, you know, we did not take, make this decision without considering these kinds of, you know, we wanted to hear from teachers, from staff, from, we certainly heard a little bit from the community, or a lot from the community, actually, about their concerns. We had 85% support in the community for the push. So with a little bit of drop-off at sixth grade, you know, in the earlier, understandably. So I'm glad these are, I, I think these are important issues. I'm glad they're being addressed. I am confused about this presentation because I think, thought what we were going to get here was some, some more investigation into certainly reaching out to other communities who, who shifted their bus schedule, what has happened with MEKO, what has happened with traffic. We did get some, you know, information about what's going to happen with the sixth grade bus. But I thought, I thought we were coming, coming back to us with investigations and information about sort of, you know, what other districts have done, what are the issues, what, you know? And I, I, so I'm just, I'm just sort of confused about this presentation, I have to be honest. And I, so I'm just sort of confused about this presentation, I have to be honest.
I think that's going to take a little more manpower, especially at this time of the year. I think that while we certainly, for me, for us, calling out these and identifying what it is we need to do the research on, you know, I would imagine that Margaret would have to go out to some companies and we would have to do even maybe some more surveys. I think for people, the start time, delaying the start time itself sounds like a great idea. No one would disagree with that. I mean, you look at these articles that we listed and you read the studies. No one is going to disagree with that. Everybody's going to support it. But then, when push comes to shove and we actually do it...
Yeah. Which is why I wanted to investigate this, you know, a year and a half ago. But yeah, no, it's very...
We're here now, and I think maybe, you know, moving forward with it, I think we'll be able to kind of get over some of these obstacles, as Matt said.
So, I guess the reason why, I mean, almost any one of these, I can give you an answer, right? I mean, in terms of some of the impacts on Metco. The issue becomes for us, well, one is money. That's what she said. I was going to get there last. But becomes sort of process, right? So, if we're looking at Metco, for example, just as one example, we have some idea of what it's going to do in terms of time. Ms. Thomas has already reached out to look at what it would do. The reality is, part of the question that we have to bring back to the school committee is what are your goals? What are your commitments? What are the constraints? And how many resources are people willing to put towards it? Right? So, if the answer is you need to run the Metco program for the same exact amount that you're running it, and there's no more resources around that, then there's one set of answers. If the goal is, you know, to provide other supports, then we can look at whether there are other buses, routes that would be supportive in terms of having the impact be better. And we can look at programming that might be supportive in terms of making the programming better. Ms. Thomas could tell you tomorrow what all the other Metco programs do to support people all across. I could tell you tomorrow pretty easily. And the same thing is true with daycare, right? If we're looking at the daycare program, again, we have to know kind of what the constraints are and what the mandate is from the school committee and who's authorized to make those decisions. Because a lot of those programs, for example, community education, it's not my program, right? So, the conversation isn't necessarily my conversation. Jen Rothenberg and I have sat down and talked about this extensively. She knows what the possibilities are. She's already started thinking about it. But that problem solving is not one that I'm going to present about. If we're talking about youth sports, when we have a mandate to start moving forward, then we would go out and talk to the folks to recommend about what's going on with the field. We'd reach out to all of those communities and get back from them. They're, "Well, this is happening. Okay, here are the things I want to know." And then, we'd have to come back to you. That, the reason why we said we needed a year is because that's just going to take time, right? They're going to, if I sent them out a form, even if it was a perfect form, asking them the question, they're not going to get back to me for a month. And then, I'm going to come up with a solution they're not going to like. And then, they're, you know, so, and I'm not sure how many of those things, frankly, are even within my purview. And that's why I think, sort of figuring out how to have an implementation committee, which is different than sort of, I mean, you've gotten, I know over the last four years, there's been multiple surveys, the union teachers...
Yeah, we were looking for an implementation committee.
You've gotten lots of feedback.
Yep.
We never got an, we never thought we got an implementation mandate. And if there was a miscommunication, we've already talked about that. But we never thought we had an implementation mandate. And if we're looking at an implementation committee, it doesn't have to be a lot of people. They just need a mandate and a focus.
Yeah.
Mr. Schluckman?
Yeah, I mean, here's sort of where I thought we were going with this. Is that the, in the winter, we said, we want an 8:30 start, plus or minus for transportation and logistics. So, 8:20, 8:30, 8:40, we were willing to play with this. But this winter, we said, "This is what we want to happen. Come back to us in June. Tell us if, for some reason, this is not possible, and explain that. And if it is, and other than that, we're moving forward, then what do you need?" So, these are the parameters. I don't think the committee, at least myself, after several years of batting this around, is going to want to go back on the determination that the district is going for an 8:30 start. So, Metco, if they're getting up absurdly early, they could get up a little less absurdly early with a later start. There are pluses and minuses and problems with the contract. So, you can shave a couple of minutes off here and add them there, get the meeting scheduled. What do you need from us? What do you need to do with the union? Where do we need to go? And where do we need to assist the leaders in this community to make this happen? Because our mandate is make this happen. And that's just where we're at.
I guess I would say I couldn't, I can't answer that question until I have all of the details from this. And I can't get all of the details from this until, I guess, we need more time to do that. I mean, I don't think any one of us is disagreeing with you or saying, you know, "We can't make an 8:30 start time work." I think we all want to make an 8:30 start time work. It's just that as we do that, I mean, you just made me even think of, I didn't even think of this, is I've got an elementary school program housed in my building after school every day. So, they're going to be now showing up, and I'm still going to have school in session. I didn't even think of that until you just started talking about it. So, there's going to be things here that we need to unpack. I don't think it's just as easy as saying, "We want it, so we're going to have it." And shaving minutes off of things sounds like an easy solution. But again, we've got contractual language that are going to bind us too. So, we've got to think through that. I just think we need some think time. Honestly, I think that it's important for you to note that we want to do it. But we also have all of these things to be thinking about.
But basically, what I'm saying here is what we said in the winter was, we are making a vote to move to an 8:30 start in 2020. Come back to us if we can't do this or there's a huge problem by June. Other than that, we're starting at 8:30 in 2020.
Can I clarify?
Well, hold on.
Okay, sorry.
Let me just finish. This is the message that we sent out in the winter. And the reason why this is on the agenda now is that we sort of set this meeting as the deadline for we can't do it or we need to, you need to adjust your vote. So, we have now told the community, flat out, we are going to start at 8:30 in 2020. That is our vote. And I think that as we walk out the door tonight, that will be in cement.
So, can I just clarify? I believe that we were told this in April. Wasn't that when we had that vote and I was here? So, we were told in April, which is not the winter, just to be clear.
Okay.
Okay.
It felt like winter.
Well, and let me be clear. I can move the start time to 8:30, right? I have five different schedules for moving the start time to 8:30. The athletic programs already have a plan in place, okay? So, in terms of my responsibility for running my building, I can do that right now, okay? I've already figured out how to do it. I've already had conversations with my staff. We're already piloting a schedule next year that will make it easier for us to think about how to do that. What we're coming back to the school committee and saying is that if you want to have the intended impacts that you want to have on student teaching and learning, there are things that the school committee needs to do, right? The school, I cannot, if you want, the school committee needs to make commitments around supporting daycare. That's not something I can do. Around the way in which we're going to negotiate with the contract in order to support teacher PD time, okay? Those are all things written down in this thing. And somebody needs to take, whoever it is we need to sit down and talk to to work through those details, we can do. But I can't do that right now because I don't have the mandate or the authority to make those policy negotiation or funding changes.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I agree. You're in a powerful position, but you're not the school committee.
Yeah.
And the union contractors between the committee and the AEA, we set the budget, we allocate resources. So, there has to be that partnership. So, this meeting was basically the meeting where you come and say, "You can't really do this. You've got to change that vote. We're passing that point now. I'm willing to work and do anything I can, and I think my colleagues agree, to make this happen and work and be the best I can." But this is the decision point.
So, the one thing I would say is, we're, or at least, I think I've been pretty clear. I would like an 8:30 start. For me, the biggest issue in finding this out is because of the contract language. That if you wanted to go to an 8:30 start, I am not sure how I'm having faculty meetings, department meetings, and time for teachers to work on goals. So, that is something that is, as Matt would say, above my pay grade. Like, I don't have that changed. So, if you're asking me, "What is the biggest issue?" For something I would like to have, I would like, I'm fully endorsing an 8:30 start time. But I think it's important to know that what that result is going to be, unless the contract is changed, unless something is, you know, agreed upon with the union, is that there are three Tuesday-after meetings a month that will not be held. And so, those are things that I really feel, like you ask for, "What's the brass tacks? What's the biggest thing?" For me, I can look at the later start and the commute time for faculty, and all those things are important for staff members. But to me, the really big issue is, if you want an 8:30 start and we do not renegotiate that part of the contract, then we lose those things.
Mr. Hayner?
First off, I personally would like all discussion with regard to contracts stopped. It belongs in an executive session. That's number one. That's not a shot on you. I personally believe you've done exactly what I wanted you to do. You've told me that you support it. You've told me what's in the way. You've told me what you can do. You've also basically told us what we need to do in order to make this thing work. The contract part belongs to us. You've said that, Mr. Schluckman, and I support that. If someone else wants to volunteer, they can take it over me. I would be willing to chair a subcommittee on this to be a focal point. You guys are going to be the brain trust. To funnel this back to this committee, we need to act quickly in order to get this going in September of 2020 because contractual issues have to be settled fairly early to make everything else fall in line. I think the other part that I was deeply concerned with is the Metco part. I'm looking forward to seeing what you have to offer, Dr. Jenga, in the support of that. Because just suggesting that these kids get up, start on the bus a half hour earlier, I defy you to go into Boston in a 15-minute change. From 7:30, you go in, and then go in at 7:45, you're going to add an hour just by going that 15 minutes, or even trying to come out of Boston.
You need an hour?
Right. And it's just not changing, as you said. So, I've said my piece.
Dr. Allison Hapley?
I'm actually kind of following up on Bill now. We need a process. What is our process going to be? It sounded like we sort of thought the process was saying, "Here, this is what we want you to do," and expecting to hear something back. And yet, I'm hearing from our esteemed principals that they're asking what the process is going to be. And we own a good chunk of it because it does devolve into contract negotiations. So, what is our process going to be? I support this, what Mr. Hayner suggested.
Let me address that. So, this is the first we're hearing that it requires a contract change. So, we always knew that that was, we didn't know, I mean, we found out in April that that was in the contract. We had previously been assured that we could change the start time under the contract. But then, this was raised in April, and so, now it became an obstacle. The question is, is that an immovable obstacle? It sounds like at the high school, we can rearrange the schedule so we can still do it. At the middle school, you're saying you cannot shave 15 minutes off a day once a week?
I think that's something we have to look at and something I would ask for the school committees, that if we have one day that is going to be shortened, is that something that they're in support? So, you would have, let's say you would have a start time of 8:30 and you'd push the end day back to 3:00. Then, are you willing on that one day to go 8:30 and end at 2:30? So, you're getting a half an hour later. You're getting 30 minutes less of a school day once a week. So, I don't know, based on that time...
Contract says 2:45 or 2:46, right?
Right. So, we, and I believe, and I'm going to appeal to people who know a little bit more about the contract, is I believe that you would have to end earlier on that one day. So, you're sacrificing, depending on the week, a half an hour of learning. Now, I still believe that might get us fine with the state in terms of teaching and learning time. I think the Gibbs, it's a little bit more, they're a little bit more difficult. We'd have to get the numbers. But the question is, would that be something that the school committee would be able to say, "Yes, we understand, we're giving up X number of teaching time, and we could fit in the faculty meetings or whatever we wanted to do it twice a month or so."
So, your preference is to change that rule, and that's something that we can open negotiations on. We already have a subcommittee established. We don't need a new subcommittee. So, we can go ahead and take that on. But that's the purpose of this meeting, is to get that request from you. I mean, that's not something that we can decide we need to change.
Yeah.
You're requesting that you prefer that change, and we will pursue it. But you need to have a backup plan in case negotiations aren't successful.
Of course.
Well, yes, they have a very, they have a lot of different possibilities. The thing that's important is that everybody wants to work with this. They see the value of it. What they're doing is outlining the things we need to work on next year in order for this to be successful. And there are some things that we need your support on. And it could involve, one of the solutions could be, you know, an earlier release on one given day. It might mean at Gibbs, in order to achieve that, we have to give up recess that day and have a different schedule. Those are things that we know that we would need to do. And that's why they recommended waiting a year so they can do all these things. And I think the more you, like everything, everyone thought, "Great. 8:30 is going to be a great time." And yes, the contract does allow the school committees at the time, but there was some language that admittedly a number of us missed. But there's a high confidence we can do this. You just have a lot of things we need to work on and make sure that everybody is on the same page as to what it's going to take. I will add one last thing about Metco. We have investigated with the company. Here with our issue, again, with, you know, it's always something, is that we haven't, we don't have a contract for transportation yet. It was bid out, there's some issues with it. It's the way Metco is redoing things. So, we have to wait until we actually agree on the company and then work with them. We can't do it before that all happens.
Ms. Morgan?
So, I just, I want to talk a little bit about the process. So, we, and I feel like we're sort of similar right now. You know, there was all this churn about, "Are we going to open a 6th grade? Is it going to be..." Like, the whole Gibbs thing was like, "All of this angst and this." And then, there was this sort of apex turning point where we're like, "We are doing this. This is what's going to happen. Here we go." And then, there was this extraordinary amount of planning and hard work. And then there was this extraordinary amount of planning and hard work, and then it happened, which was magnificent, right? And I think what I'm hearing or feeling here is that, like, we're about to hit that apex point right now, and like, we're kind of a little uncomfortable about it, and we're like, and we're saying, oh, well, we had talked about this in April, but now here we are, and like, now we're like, really turning the corner, where we're actually going to do this, and we're going to start doing the hard work. And that, you know, makes us, like, it makes everybody feel a little bit uncomfortable. So I think we've made that turn, and we're, you know, we're going to go, and we're going to do this, because it's what we've decided to do. I want to be really careful about the process. I get really angsty about the word "subcommittee" because of our obligations. When we form a subcommittee, we have to have a chair, and we have to have members, and we have to have publicly posted meetings, and we have to take notes. And there have been requests from the community to have subcommittees about this, and subcommittees about that, and then all of a sudden, you have like 50,000 subcommittees that you're posting, like, five meetings a week. So anyway, I would love to see it be something that's more comparable to like the committee that we put together for the Gibbs, where we had some parents, and we had some teachers. And I don't know that it needs to be as many parents as that piece, you know, maybe one or a few, I don't know. But I don't think it needs, it needs a different constituency, certainly. But I would love for it to be sort of a start time advisory committee, or, you know, however that, like, look sounds, I don't know, you know. But I think that, you know, we maybe need to pull that together, so that we all feel like we're, you know, marching down this road together. It sounds like the union piece can be diverted into a different subcommittee, and it sounds like, you know, whatever this group looks like, like, there would be some requests to budget, to say, we need this, this, and this, it's going to cost that, that, and that. But, you know, I think that that, it makes a lot of sense to pull that kind of a group together, and maybe it'll make, you know, I think there should certainly be somebody from the school committee on it. So, you know, I think it's a good idea, and I think it will also give us that sense of, like, and here we go, we're going to do this, right? Which I think is important. I think it'll make everybody feel more comfortable.
Mr. Thillman?
So I think we have, you know, we have subcommittees on the school committee now. So we have the curriculum instruction assessment subcommittee, we have the community relations subcommittee. One of those two committees can be the committee. I think the committee, the subcommittee would be the thought partner with the people inside the district. And things usually work when there's like one owner of the process, that's my experience, anyway. And so like, where it says here in this, I think it's Matt's memo, I recommend that the school committee convene a committee to reach out to administration, the teachers' union, the community groups, to gather information on policies, programs, supports, and resources that may necessarily support the change. I think there needs to be sort of a, like, a staff owner who is identifying these things, and then that group, that person is working with the, one of the subcommittees on the process. I also think, you know, we have the examples at the high school level, anyway, at Burlington, Watertown, Winchester. Do they change their middle school start times as well, those three districts?
I don't know. I haven't answered.
Do you know if they did? They must have.
It's mixed on that one. The answer is yes on Winchester, yeah.
Winchester did. So there's at least one district with a middle school and a high school. So I think there's enough, like, there's enough external thought partners to talk to. So I think the process can be fairly simple. It's like a staff owner, I get, it's always, yeah, I have mixed results when there's owners, but anyway. Staff owner, one of our subcommittees appointed to manage this process. You get benchmarks from other districts. You come back over the course of the year with, these are the issues. We do have the contract issue, and we have to figure out what that means. I think it's a question of quick data, like, how many minutes? How much would you lose? I don't know. I think that's a pretty, I mean, but I'm not sure you're looking for the committee to reach out to all these groups. I think you want the administrative leadership to reach out to these groups, the staff owner is doing that, and then we're the thought partner with you on the process over the course of the year. That's how I think it should be structured.
Yes, Dr. Jenga?
So I think, for me, I can't speak for the two of them, but for me, the biggest challenge here is the process question, right? And the process question is this, I lay out in this sort of what the constraints are right now. If you told me those are my constraints, I could give you five samples tomorrow. But where I get kind of locked up is I think there are probably better solutions that will make everybody happier if we have a conversation. And that conversation, this goes back to the conversation, is, has to include the union, right? And kind of where, and so I'm not going to go, I don't think I'm ever mandated to sit down with Mary Ann and have this, like, you know, hey, what are you guys willing to do? Because I'm never on the negotiating committee, right? And so, so I don't, and I honestly, I'm just saying this, I actually do not know how to convene that group, to have that fairly small and focused conversation, you know, because I can tell you how many minutes each of my solutions takes off. The high school right now is about 40 hours over the 990. So we can lose half an hour a week and be fine. I'd rather not lose half an hour of instruction a week, and I might find other ways to double dip and to keep it instructional and to start meetings. I have clever ideas. But I also think there are other ways to think about that with folks. So it's really, that is a question for me. How do we have that conversation around the things that we don't usually have mandate to talk about, sort of outside of the process? Do we create that process? I don't mind.
I think it's the subcommittee, whatever subcommittee the chair wants to appoint to do this, interfacing with the owner or owners. And then there's a side question, which is a negotiation thing. We do have a negotiation subcommittee that would do that. I mean, it would really be, I mean, I don't know who would be in the room, it's up to Kathy and everybody, but I mean, you'd have to have that conversation with the teachers' union probably, you know, this summer. Have to start it this summer, because, and see what it means. And see, I think, first of all, you have to go into, you know, and as those meetings would evolve, there would be, you know, there would be a lot of data, and they, so I think it's doable.
And then my second question is, there are things listed here which are not ours, right? Youth sports, family childcare, and the daycare geometry. Who takes the lead on that?
So I just want, my suggestion would be, at some point, once we've hammered out some of these issues, that the school committee subcommittee would have to hold a public hearing. And we would have to have the youth sports people in here to say their piece, we would have to have the daycare, all those folks have to come to the public hearing and weigh in at some point. But I think you don't want them weighing in until we got a lot of data, we have more data than we have right now.
But, yeah, to be clear, I mean, we're going to make the decision tonight to change the start time. We already voted it, so it would be to rescind that vote. So we would reaffirm it, or we're going to do, but the announcement will go out.
We don't need a second vote.
So the announcement can now go out. We've been waiting to this meeting to actually have Dr. Boddy send the announcement to all parents, that in 2020, the start time will change to 8:30.
I think we were definitely prepared for that. I mean, I don't know if that got lost in translation, but we knew we were going to walk out of here tonight after saying to you, we will start, we are in favor of moving the start time to 8:30, and you were going to vote that, and we were going to leave. And I think, for me, and I'm speaking for Brian, too, I couldn't do that and say that to you without also knowing. I didn't, we didn't want to come back later and say, oh, yeah, we did agree with you, but now there's all this stuff. I think we really just wanted to make sure that, yes, we agree with it. I really like what you said there, Jane, you know, having gone through that Gibbs process, and once you start it and you own it, this is the hard work that goes along with it. So I think we were really just trying to be clear about the fact that these are the things we're going to have to solve between now and then. We appreciate having the year for the thoughtful rollout. I also like what you said about having a thought partner in it. I mean, I don't think we're going to need to be keeping each other in the loop throughout, however this all, you know, pans out with all of the stakeholders, not just the us sitting here as representing the district piece, if that makes sense.
Ms. Sues?
So first of all, I apologize for my earlier crankiness. But, so I just have a question. So one of the questions that we were asked you to look at, and you have, is whether we wanted to have a different start time at the middle school than we do at the high school. And one of the issues that I know intimately, being in East Arlington, but I've had other parents come to me, is that the buses get so crowded that, from East Arlington, that they stop, they don't stop anymore. And so one thought that some parents had were, well, if we started those things, if we staggered them a little bit, so they're slightly different times, that might be to an advantage. And so I love the fact that if moving to 8:30 means that they're, all the kids at Gibbs come at the same time, that's great. If we moved it to 8:25, thus, you know, getting back 25 minutes, and suppose we were to end half an hour early on a Tuesday or something, you know, moving to 8:25 gets you 25 of those half an hour, would that still be possible to come, you know, to have those buses all come at the same time?
The way that, in my conversation with Steve, he really was owning an 8:30 time in order for that to work. The other thing that Brian and I talked about is that you could conceivably have kids at both schools, and now, and in elementary school, I mean, and even some people who have lots of kids at the high school, and now you're starting at 8:05, 8:25, 8:30, 8:30. So we felt like the unified approach to, you know, in keeping with the fact that we talk a lot about, even though it's a transitional school at Gibbs, we're trying to make a one middle school experience. And I think that's why we really felt like it should be 8:30. I don't know that it would make that much of a difference if we backed it up as far as the transportation is concerned. I think he's probably worrying about them finishing up all their elementary roots, or whatever it is they're doing in the morning.
Right.
That he was pretty confident.
It just seems like potentially a solution to gaining, if we were talking about having to lose time for ending Tuesday early.
What was interesting is that I think one of the questions I had when I came across, when I left that meeting, was to look at where kids were coming, from which elementary school districts they were coming from, and if I could discern any pattern of where the kids were coming from that are most frequently late to school, and there was none. The kids who lived 500 yards down the street were just as likely to be late as the kids who were taking the bus from across.
I believe that.
There was absolutely no pattern of which district was, you know...
It's not lateness, it's the fact that parents drive their kids because the kids can't get on that city bus. And I know many, many parents who have ended up driving their kids all through that middle school, they would have loved to have them take the city bus, but the buses weren't stopping. So they're getting them to school on time, but they're just inefficiently getting them to school on time.
I just thought it was ironic, because when I looked at it, my question was, okay, if you're, you know, the farthest school district away, are those kids late more often than the ones that are close by? And there was, they were not.
Why are you looking at me, Brian?
I don't know where any of you live, so I'm not sure, but...
Ms. Morgan?
I just want to make sure, as we, like, think through this process, that we own as many, like, the Medco situation, like, we own that problem. Like, that is, that is a thing, that is a nut that we need to collectively crack. I just want to make sure that, as we go through it, we don't start taking all kinds of other issues and, like, making them our problems to solve. Because at some point, you know, choices and decisions have consequences, right? And to some extent, we have to say, we, as a school committee, as an administrative leadership team, we own this, and we understand that there are going to be inconveniences for people. I mean, we took a middle school, and we broke it into two buildings, and we sent one of them really, really, you know, in a very different space than the other one was. And we were like, because we think that it's the right thing to do, and we're going to support people to the extent that we are obligated to do by law. But then at some point, you sort of say, and now you guys are kind of, like, you got to figure this out, right? And I think, not you have to figure this out, but like, the community has to, like, work this out to some extent, right? So I want to make sure that we own the problems that we really need to solve, and then, then at some point, we sort of say, yeah, this is the decision that we've made, and, you know, we're, you know, if having, you know, 50 unaccompanied kids sitting outside the Gibbs at 7 o'clock in the morning, that seems like a compelling problem, right? Like, that's something that, like, we maybe need to work out. But, you know, making things, we can't make life easy for everybody. So at some point, we have to own our decision, move forward, people will adapt, it's a lot easier than they think, I think. And as somebody who watched the transition to the Gibbs, the churn last year was, everybody was angsty. This year, you know, I live way over there, and people are like, oh, yeah, my kid's going to take the bus, or they're going to ride their bike, and it's cool, right? So it's amazing what people can get used to if you give them a year. So I want to make sure that we don't take on more problems that we have to solve.
No, I couldn't agree with you more. I think at some point, like, as someone who has served on a lot of local youth sports boards, and been very active coaching in my community, very pro athletics, but at some point, like, I don't think the school needs to be affected by what possibly could be happening with youth sports. Because our ultimate goal is that we are educating kids, and that is foremost what we're doing. And if we make that decision, other things are going to have to adapt to what we do. So if we feel it's better to have a late start time, because it's better educationally, then some of the other things that come up, while inconvenient, and I understand, difficult to change, I think at the end of the day, if we feel it's better for kids' education, we do that, and then other people, as you said, need to adjust around that.
And I think as we change our language to be more, like, strong and forceful, it's not like, if we change, like, we are changing the start time, yay, right? Like, we're opening Gibbs School, right? And everybody's like, oh, they're really actually going to do that. Like, I actually don't know that the community believed us, that we were really going to do that, right? Here we go, we're really going to change these start times, right? And as we all use that language and are more definitive, then, you know, the other groups are going to say, oh, oh, they're really going to do that. Oh, yeah, this does impact our practice schedule or our field availability. And then they will start to adjust. And their initial reaction will be an eruption, right? They'll be like, ah! You know, but then eventually, they'll figure out, oh, yeah, we can do this, we can do that, we can, you know, so.
Dr. Allison, happy was next.
Two very separate things. One, for the meetings, why couldn't they be before school? I understand we're going to have to make decisions and stuff, but just as an option, instead of shortening the day, make it start earlier since we already have... I'm saying this is, I think this can be on the table to think about.
Good.
Okay.
So we've had a lot of discussions with our staff about that. When I, if you look at the constraints I laid out there, when I talk about keeping within the 8 to 3:30 window, we did talk about having meetings between 8 and 9, right, or 8 and 9:30. So you could use, instead of ending early, one could start a little late, but the same impact is there. We're not going to have people come in at 7:30 or 7:00, because that would be almost impossible for people to do.
Well, if we're saying that people are already coming in early because they have to for commuting, anyway, I'm just saying, it's something that can be considered, right?
I think, and I'm not 100%, but I think the contract language, I'd have to go read it again, might say something about starting 10 minutes before the start of school, whereas the end of school is specifically 2:45, which would mean if we change the start time, then their time that they would be contractually obligated to arrive would be 8:15. But I could be wrong about that.
It's something we can think about, right?
Yeah, I could be wrong about that.
Anyway, the other thing is, I would feel much more comfortable if we come out of this and we have someone who owns this, whether it's a subcommittee, whether it's Bill, whether it's, and maybe owners on both sides. But we need somebody who's going to be following this through, and otherwise, we're just going to have another meeting where we're talking, and they're talking, and we're not getting stuff done.
Mr. Thillman?
I was going to say what Kirsty said. I think either during this part of the agenda, or in the subcommittee part, we should decide which subcommittee, who's going to own up here, before the start, before we go off for the summer, and that subcommittee should, you know, work the study, the joint meeting these guys sometimes.
Okay, definitely, I agree with that. But I think, looking at the list of items that have been highlighted, the vast majority are on the administration, right? So I think the goal is, the objective is for you as a team to determine where you need our help. Obviously, with the contract to do, maybe with some budget stuff, maybe some community outreach that would be, that we can help with, that is more difficult for you to do. But a lot of the other stuff is sort of, you know, dealing with Medco, that's something that only you can do, and then come to us where you need help. And we need to decide which subcommittee will do that. But I think the ownership is largely on the administration for implementation. We decide the policy, and they implement it.
I don't disagree.
Mr. Hayner?
With all that said and done, I think this should be a regular agenda item initially at the beginning of the year. It might take two seconds, nothing to report or something, but just keep this ongoing breaking of everybody's mind.
Yeah, I'll be honest, is that I do apologize for being cranky, too, because there's a sense of frustration that we've been talking about this, and talking about this, and talking about this, and it felt like we had to drop a rock in the pond in order to move the thing. And the conversations that I've had with both students and parents in this community have all been very enthusiastic about moving the start time back. The total feedback we got until we got within a month of actually talking about it, bringing it to the table, then we started getting the whole list of reasons why we can't do it. And at that point, we said, okay, let's set 2020 as the goal, let's move forward. Now, I've scheduled every middle and high school and mall. I've run buildings that are late buildings, so we've had people coming in early for meetings. We've made adjustments, we have early release days. We've worked all of this out. The key is to make as many people happy as we can. If the teachers are happy with the solution, we come in and work with the AKA, and we get the language together, and come up with a contract modification that makes the teachers happy, that respects the community, and works out. Because we don't want to be shoving things down people's throats, and we don't want to make people unhappy. But we do have a sense of where the community wants us to go, and that's why we've pushed it. I stand committed to do anything I can as an individual, and I'm sure everybody here is willing to work on it. But let's make this happen, and let's be positive about it. This is a good thing for kids.
Yeah, I agree.
Great.
Sorry. So I would be happy with community relations to continue doing the outreach. So what we did last year is that we had a open forum with about 30 people. We solicited letters, and we received comments from about 80 people. So we do have some sense of the issues and concerns that are in the community. I have to say, and this is just typical of scheduling thing, for every person who had an issue, there was four other people who thought it worked better with their schedule, because they could drop off their elementary school kid first because there, they wouldn't have music starting at 7:30 anymore, or, you know, seven anymore, right? At 7:30 it felt easier than seven. You know, so there was just a bunch of, you know, and I suspect that teachers, there's some similar stuff, that for, that there are teachers for whom, and they might be quieter about this now, for whom the schedule works much better. And there are teachers for whom it works worse. And so that's, you're just going to sort of encounter that. So anyway, I'd be happy to continue the outreach, to hold another public forum, to, to, to listen to people's concerns, and I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Is that a motion to move it to Community Relations?
Sure, in terms of the public outreach, absolutely. I'm happy with that.
Second.
Okay.
But just, just to be clear, I think it would be, it would be for any implementation issues that arise.
Arise, in terms of community issues.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there may be something else.
All right. Well, I mean, I think the union staff has to be under the...
Well, the union, yes. It's, union staff will, will go to negotiations, but if there's some issue, for example, with MEPCO, right?
Yeah.
That has to be brought to the full committee.
Yeah.
Then you should just, Community Relations should just do that, right?
I, I'm happy to own that.
Yeah, one committee for the whole...
I'm happy to own that, yeah.
Dr. Allison Anpey?
I'm, I'm just verifying, so you folks are going to be the ones making sure that it's moving forward?
That's moving forward, yes. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Right, we're also doing a calendar...
Actually, it's, I, I think it's really important to have a, a subcommittee, but you're absolutely right. It is our team here that's going to move this forward and laying out the roadmaps of the things that we're going to have to work on. And you're correct, that's exactly what happened with Gibbs. You say, we're going to do it, and they're coming in to say, we're going to do it, but everyone needs to understand the complexity of this. The more you dig into it, the more complex. And so it's not an obstacle, there are challenges, there's things we need to do, and we're going to need your help in some of the things, not all the things.
Okay, last, last remarks. Mr. Henner?
Going on with what Dr. Bodie just said, we need to know as immediately if there, all of a sudden you discover an obstacle that you were unaware of that will impact the implementation.
Mm-hmm.
And not, not wait till April or May, because I think that's important for us to know, to understand that something we didn't, you or we didn't foresee has just come up and is having a negative effect on us.
Yes, Dr. Jenner?
So I'm willing to predict that there's nothing I can see from anything I've seen in any other districts, anything we've looked at, that will lead us to a we can't, right? The issue is to have the, as, I think, to make as many people as happy as possible and have as much of a positive impact as possible. I still have a question, which I can see the way clear to do most of this, but I want to be clear process-wise, because the, the two things I wrote here are contract and money, right? And once I know, there's this sort of chicken and egg problem for me, which is that once I know the constraints I'm working with, I can make it work. But if the, the first conversation I want to have, the one that I worry the most about, is that negotiations conversation. Because if the response on the part of the teachers' union is, we don't want to, we're just sticking with the contract, you got another year to negotiations, you guys work it out, well, that's fine, I can do, I can come up with a solution, but then that, that's where I start. Or if the answer is, we have ideas, we have things we want to do, there are, you know, goals that they have, which I have had, I've had many, many conversations informally with members of the executive committee and, and my own teacher reps, but I haven't had a formal one where I have a mandate to have a real conversation. So that's the first question I have for me, is when, who, and where is that conversation going to take place? Because everything else will flow from that.
Who is on this?
So actually, I, I just checked, I left that committee, I left that subcommittee open because we weren't going to have negotiations. So we, I will find, I will find two members for that. But I think, you know, Rob, you need to let us know what the best way to open negotiations on that issue.
Okay. I mean, I think the best way is to correspond with the union and request to open negotiations on the issue.
Yeah, so how does that work? Do you talk with Liz and have her draft a letter, or what's that step?
Either Liz can, either Liz can draft a letter or I can draft a letter to Jason and we can do that, but then we're getting it to negotiations and I don't know, well, I guess we're not really in negotiations, we're just talking about how to go.
The process, to get it started.
Yeah, I mean, that's how it would work. And then Jason and the union can decide whether they want to enter negotiations or not, so.
Yes.
So draft a letter and see what happens.
All right, so there is a motion that the, any, the implementation process for the start time be referred to the Community Relations Subcommittee. Is that, am I stating it correctly?
That's Jennifer, Jeff, and Jane, okay.
So moved.
All right, and second?
Second.
Or it may have already been moved.
Jennifer had already made the motion.
I made the motion, no, it's okay. It does, yeah, I wasn't sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, unanimous. Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you.
More work to do, but thanks for, for coming tonight to share that with us.
Okay.
All right, so now we're back in order, not really, District Goals is next.
Do you need to put that, that Negotiations Subcommittee together or no?
I, we...
We don't need to do it immediately.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you wanted to meet this summer.
We can do a special meeting if that's required.
All right.
The goals.
The goals. This involves many people and more discussion as we've, we've, we've gone through this process. So let me be clear, what needs to happen tonight. You have been presented with the objectives for next year and many, many of the actions. The actions, while we will get that in a clearer, more organized, well, not, not organized, but in a clearer format over the, the summer. What you really need to approve tonight are the objectives under each of the overriding goals, the overarching goals. Now, since the last time we met, this is the second read on this, we have had some language change on 1.1. It has not changed the intent of what, in fact, it's very much in alignment with the actions. Let me read this one out loud because it, it has some changes to it. Students will engage in curricula that are designed to support the district's vision of student as learner, which emphasizes transferable skills such as global and cultural awareness, creativity, collaboration, responsibility, communication, and critical thinking, remain in alignment with state standards, are coherent within each discipline, and can be measured by common and state assessments. So the actions that, there are, by every department, there are actions under this particular objective. Nothing has changed in Goal Objective 1.2, which looks at SEL instruction and the work that we do around cultural bias and this decision-making, really empathy and importance of positive relationships. So those are the two objectives under overarching Goal 1, which is about student achievement. Under Staff Excellence and Professional Development, these goals have remained virtually the same. I don't think there's been any change in the language of, of, of the objectives 2.1, 2.2. Goal 3, which deals with the resources, infrastructure, and educational environment, just a little bit of word editing here, I don't think we needed the language in the school year 2019-20 because that's implicit in what, what these are. So, so some of that has been, had been cleaned up a bit in language. And then we added Goal 3.3, which was a suggestion of Mr. Carden, and the language has been modified, which is, seems agreeable to all concerned, which is, the district will continue to implement the recommendations in the lab inclusionary report, of which you heard the roadmap for next year and the work that's been done this year. And then under Operations, Communication, Stakeholder Engagement, I think, actually, what we could do in Goal 4.1, which says contingent on community approval of a debt exclusion override for the new high school, we might now be able to, now we know that that is happening, and just sort of change the language a little bit about that, so that we are going to be moving into the detailed design of the high school and actually beginning construction drawings and construction planning, which will begin next summer, and actually some preparatory work will happen probably even in the spring. And then no change in 4.2 about the district elementary curriculum that we post on the website. And then with the suggestion, Ms. Morgan, we've all, we've sort of modified, shortened the language in 4.3, which will have to do with developing a maintenance plan for the high school during the rebuild. So those were the, the big efforts. We'll get you, you know, the charts with all of the actions, which one of the things we're working on, which is basically, based on a decision from the school committee is, is that, you know, why are you doing each one of these? How does this relate to, what's the rationale? And so all of that information is being worked on, but simply not enough time to complete that before tonight. But again, that's not what you vote on anyway, what you vote on are, are the goals. So this is the second read, and the, what I propose is a motion to accept these unless there's any further wordsmithing or things we need to change. And that way, the school principals will have this as their roadmap as they develop their school improvement plans.
Do we have a motion to adopt these as our goals?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is Calendar Update.
So this is, again, the second read on the calendar, and a few changes have been made after the discussion that we had last time in terms of when we would have school committee meetings. Generally, when the first calendar is put together, they pretty much put it in the, you know, the order of the second and the fourth, but sometimes those don't work as well. So Mr. Carden and I have gone over some of these suggested, suggested changes, and they are on, on the calendar. We also have, I don't think there's really too many other changes here in terms of where conferences are going to be or early release days. So those were the major changes that occurred. There may have been, I, I think one of the things people need are, you know, 3.5 reading glasses to read some of the middle, but if they put it, if they look at the calendar online, you can enlarge it.
And just to clarify on the school committee meetings, the policy does require us to schedule 20 meetings. We can drop the November one, we can drop the June one. Certainly, I expect to drop one or both of those, but the, the policy requires 20.
To be scheduled.
Be scheduled.
Be scheduled. We did schedule them all.
Good parsing of the language.
Well, we've always known that.
Yeah, that's how we've operated, we just haven't always scheduled them.
Dr. Allison Anpey?
I just wanted to point out, last, at last meeting, there was a comment made that there was thought that we needed more than one meeting in November for budget reasons, and we had a budget subcommittee, quick budget subcommittee meeting right before our meeting today. And it's the opinion of budget that we do not need an extra meeting in November, just as an FYI.
We have the 14th, we'll wait to keep it scheduled for now.
You can schedule and cancel because you never tell what might come up.
Correct.
But it's just, budget doesn't...
Budget doesn't.
Which one are we taking out, the 14th or the 21st?
Nothing right now.
They're both staying on, they're both staying on for now.
They're going to stay on it, but we may not need it.
But likely, if we only need one, then probably the 21 will go.
Thank you. It's a definite baby.
Yes.
Amy.
All right, any other questions?
Just one more. So we get, I mean, people have a lot of feelings about this calendar, and I feel a little bit the same way about the calendar as I do about the start time, right? We're never going to make everybody happy, so we've got to just do the best we can. I do find, though, as somebody who reads a lot of calendars, the EE dash slash MS, early release at 1:00 lunch served, MS, I believe is middle schools, is my guess.
Correct.
It's not super, like, we call them GSC, we have got GSC Gibbs School, so...
There are, down at the bottom, there is a...
There's a whole legend, right?
Whole list, right, exactly.
Is ME, E, early release, LM, LM, elementary slash middle school. All right, I mean, I guess, we got to hope that people know that Gibbs and Odison are the middle school.
When it says middle school, it's...
They're probably there by now. They probably get that.
Now, having, having said that, when it is different for OMS and Gibbs, we, we call that out. MS would mean both of them. So my suggestion, if I was a parent and looking at this, I would create my own calendar so that I know exactly what's happening. And I think that certainly there's plenty of communication that goes on from schools that's just to remind people of various things. But this is a way to try to organize it at a, at a district level, which is challenging because of the letters you have to use.
And I think, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, but so, you know, I, we're entirely open to new format, and I think the Calendar Committee has been looking at some.
Get that.
Every district is challenged with this, and maybe there's some improvements we can make.
I think, though, that what is nice about this calendar, that, like, I've looked at some other ones, like Cambridge has a nice one, but all the other ones that I've seen that I'm like, oh, that's better than ours, they all are required to be viewed in color, right? Whereas at least this calendar can be photocopied in black and white and sent home in paper format, and it basically works. Whereas anything else that I've seen that I have thought, oh, that's more intuitive and user-friendly, it would require, you know, 6,000 color copies, which we're not going to do. So I do, I like that. I, so anyway, that's my feedback to the calendar.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do it.
So I'm, I'm, I'm with approval of the, of the 2020 calendar.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, also unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Professional Development Summary. Dr. McNeil?
Is it on the... I think so, yeah.
I think Karen put it on.
Okay.
Is that what it is? Or is there a different one?
Well, the fir, the first thing is the Summer Professional Development.
Oh, we're...
That, the, both documents are in Novus.
It's not open.
Novus is not, I can, I can just link my computer up.
Yeah.
There's a PowerPoint, PDF in Novus.
I apologize for the bulb. But basically, the, as, as we just finished talking about the goals for next year, you'll see that if you look through this, this is the table for the, or the spreadsheet for the Summer Professional Development that has been planned by the Curriculum and Instruction Department. What you'll see in each one of the columns, you'll see the date, grades, content area, description of the PD, who's the person, the contact person, who's the person responsible for that particular professional development event, where its location, the location, the cost, and, you know, some notes that give a little bit more detail as to what will will take place and what are some of the goals are for that particular workshop or curriculum session. So, you know, I'm not going to go through each one of them individually. I'll just try to highlight what the themes are. The first thing I want to say is that if you look at the district goals for next year and the professional development that we have planned for the summer and then in my subsequent PowerPoint, which outlines the professional development that's going to take place during next school year, you'll see that there's a, a, a high correlation between the goals and what we have to do in order to provide a foundation for learning for the teachers and also looking at the various updates that we're doing over the summer. I want to add to that, that much of the curriculum writing and creation of units of study happens during the summertime because, you know, in order for us to be productive, it's best that we have back-to-back sessions and we don't have to worry about securing substitute teachers for, the classroom teachers or anything of that nature. So it's a much more opportune time to look at the curriculum writing. And so some of the main themes that you'll see with the summer professional development, you know, we have the responsive classroom in there, which is connected to our district goal around soc- social and emotional learning. We also have, you know, some units of stud, or investigations three point O, which we completed the implementation, grades one through five this year. So you'll see a lot of work around that in math. As you look at social studies, I know that Denny was here last week, I think it was, or the week before last, and he was talking about all the work that they're doing in order to align instruction with the updated standards. So you'll see a, an alignment with that as you look at the summer professional development plan for social studies. If you look at ELL, there's the model units that the state has mandated that all ELL directors and teachers work on mo- model curriculum units. So you'll see that taking place. In science, we're looking at, again, supporting the FOS kits and also curriculum and instruction objectives connected at the high school and the elementary, at the elementary level and the high school. Visual arts, there's a big focus on TAB, teaching for artistic behavior. And then we have cultural competency where Ms. Thomas, who is our director of MECCO, is looking at facilitating a course or teaching a course in anti-racism. So you'll see that, you know, if you look at the themes of the summer professional development, it's, you know, very closely aligned with our district goals for next year and also some of the, some of the work and, and adding on to the work that we've done this prior year. Are there any questions on the summer professional development? Yes?
Just a minor on, on the second and last page, what determine, you have down the MECCO, three teachers, four days at the same price for three teachers, three days, just below it. Is there, is, is there a formula for?
For three teachers for four days for the, well, that's not just MECCO. That, that's the course that I was referring to, the anti-racist racism.
Okay, is, is the makeup of that group, three teachers for four days?
Right, because.
Okay, down, just down below, there's another one for the same amount of money for three teachers, three days. Is that?
What line are you looking at?
Okay, the third line down below the MECCO one by Deb Perry. They're both, the charge is 1350.
Oh, so that's.
It's just a minor, I'm just trying to understand.
If you look at the description, so that's, if you look over to the left, you'll see that that's grade seven. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm looking at the same line you are.
Either one, six or seven, either one.
Yeah, there appears to be a miscalculation.
Okay, yeah, so you're looking at the calculation. Thank you for pointing that out.
Either it's three days or it's charged $450.
Correct.
Want to keep everybody happy.
Right, right. No, that, thank you for pointing that out because it's, it's, the rate is the same for all teachers.
That's what I thought.
Exactly.
I think this is a phenomenal program and yet to be commended.
Thank you.
And the staff, taking this time.
Thank you. I want to commend the curriculum leaders and the directors. They put a lot of thought and working with the teachers in order to plan this because, you know, as the summertime, you know, you know, teachers, having them available, but this also shows the commitment from our teachers and our instructional staff to their extended learning and, you know, always trying to move forward with our instructional initiatives.
Dr. Allison Anpe?
Two questions. One, just to verify, the cost, is the cost to the district? We're not charging the teachers these costs?
Correct. This is, right, and if you look at the bottom, you'll see the total for everything. So I have been given a certain amount and so we do have a budget and so we have to come in at that, at that budget or under the budget.
Okay. And the second question was that I don't, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see that much that would apply to special education teachers in specific. Is that elsewhere or is it?
Well, this is curriculum and instruction, so Allison has, you know, special education, summer PD, so that would be something separate.
That would be in a different.
Right, I would not.
Primarily, we offer TCI.
Right.
Okay. Primarily, we offer TCI over the summer.
Okay, thank you.
But when you look at the description of the teachers that are coming in, that, you know, that's still, I mean, I didn't list like what role they're playing. There may be special education teachers that are coming in in order to learn curriculum. So this is open to everyone. So I don't, I mean, I didn't list that specifically, like who the teachers are, so it's open to all teachers.
Okay.
Ms. Seuss?
I just have a question actually about budgetary stuff. So if something happens in June, is it under FY19? And if it happens in July, is it under FY20? Or is, is that what happens? Okay, okay. So the 74 doesn't hit one budget cycle, it hits two. It's separate, okay. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. So.
Excuse me.
Any other?
The, the summer curriculum budget is coming out of the FY20 budget? Yeah, I misunderstand that.
It comes out of two different budgets, depending on the dates of the services that are occurring. So if it happens before June 30th, it's going to be part of the fiscal 19 budget. And if it happens after, on July 1 and after, it comes out of the fiscal 20 budget, based on fiscal policy.
So it's when the service is provided?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I do want to make a correction that I, when you look at the responsive classroom for middle school, I did have to reschedule that. I did have to cancel that one because we just didn't have the, the number of people to sign up. And it was, it's quite pricey and so I want to make sure that when we have the session, that it's fully, that we have the participants and it's at the full amount, which is 30. So we could have 30 participants for those particular sessions and so we just weren't even close to that. So I did cancel the middle, middle school one, but that doesn't mean that we can't have it for next year. It's just at this particular point, I had to cancel it.
So those don't have costs? Are those funded by grants or?
Well, it does, it's, I took it out of, because it's not coming out of my budget specifically. So it's coming out of the general, so I just want to be specific because if I added that in there, it would mislead you to think that I was grossly over the budget that was allocated for my department and I didn't want to make it seem like I'm just spending willy-nilly.
Good for you for putting it in someone else's budget. It's a good move.
Right.
He's learning.
It's a good move.
All right, so the, any other?
Okay, so going to, so are there any other questions on the summer PD budget? Okay, so looking at the, and you just went through the district goals. And so if you look at the goal objective two point one, it's pretty much focused on professional development. And again, I, I put all the action steps in there, so, so you would be apprised of all the things that the different departments are doing as it relates to professional development. But if you go to the end of the presentation, I have a slide in there that talks about the, that speaks to the themes. Again, I, I, I think that it's important for us to highlight the themes so you could see what the alignment is with the overall district goals, because I think that's very important. Like, we work very hard to make sure that the professional development is closely aligned with the instructional goals that we have put forth for next year. And so you'll see some of the themes there are cultural competency and just to highlight that, again, we're going to have a, a all-day professional development on November 1st, where all district staff will be a part of that. And that, the, the, the actual title is equity and inclusion. So a big part of that will be focusing on cultural competency as well as social and emotional learning. Again, we have a, if you look at the theme from our district goals, there's a big push to focus on tier one instruction, which is like general and, general education instruction that impacts all children. And so we're doing a lot of alignment and updates to the curriculum, to our instruct- to our curriculum and instructional resources. So that's a, a big theme there and, and being able to provide teachers with the proper amount of professional development as we look at implementation and learning how to use those instructional resources. Co-teaching is another one of them. And that again falls, as, as Allison mentioned earlier, that's something that we own as well, from the general education perspective. So that's something that we're doing in partnership and we have, you know, a different instructional initiatives such as the elimination of curriculum B at the high school algebra class in the math department and also in English, the department of English. So we're doing some, you know, really outstanding efforts to provide co-teaching in math and in the department of English. Digital citizenship and literacy is something that we are focusing on for next year as we look at implementing the standards and looking at, and, and there's two, I want to make a distinction between digital citizenship and literacy, they're two distinct things. So I just want to make sure I point that out, but we're also focusing on that. And we have, we piloted some lessons around digital citizenship this year and so next year, we're looking for implementation and expanded pilot, K through 12. Data collection, we have the district data bank that we unveiled this year. We piloted it with literacy. And so next year, we're going to focus on what type of assessments we want to put into the data bank that will help to inform instruction, not just looking at assessments that we'll give during a formal assessment periods throughout the, throughout the year, but also looking at what are those informal, informal assessments that we can use that are more formative, that teachers can put those results in there and really look at how various, what the impact is on, on student achievement. And so project-based learning is another area that we've focused, focused our attention, on which we focused our attention as we look at Gibbs. They've done a lot around project-based learning and so science and, and math and all the other content areas. So we're looking to explore, to expand that and make it something that's consistently, that is consistently prevalent in our instruction at all levels. So as you look through the various, you know, action steps that we've done in order to promote professional development in the department of instruction, of curriculum and instruction, you'll see that those are some of the common themes. And so as we go through the action steps, the way it's divided, I have it divided up between elementary and secondary, meaning grade six through 12, and there's some district professional development that falls in there as well. So I tried to divide it up so you would be able to see at what level those particular action steps are taking place.
Great, thank you. There's a really comprehensive set of activities coming on next year. Are there any questions from the committee? None? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes.
Have a busy summer and busy year.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so, Mr. Spiegel, your next hiring update.
So there's, sorry, I, there's nothing in your packet on this because it's changing every day. So as of today, we have 24 new teacher hires or equivalent in the AEA unit, A bargaining unit. And the, I'm only including people who have already met with me and signed an offer letter and are definitely going to work here. There are people in process, in every stage of the process for other positions. And I'm also, I'm actually meeting with someone tomorrow who will be added to this list. I would say of the 24, 15 people, there's, there's 24 people, that's not 24 FTEs, but 24 people, 15 are partially or fully replacing employees who either resigned, retired, are on a leave of absence or changed positions. And that replaces 12.9 currently budgeted FTE and adds 2.1 FTE. So it's kind of, there, some of the partial replacements are actually also taking some new FTE. It's a little complicated sometimes. And then we have nine completely new FTEs. So I think our total increase in FTEs that we've hired so far is 11.1. And that's from the budget, all the buckets of the, well, the first, the first bucket of the budget where we have the ads and maybe some of the second. So we've had, we've hired in all departments, new teachers in English at the high school, science at the high school, replacing teachers, teachers who've left, math at the high school, guidance at the high school, special education at the high school and family and consumer science at the high school. At Audison, we've hired English, math, Spanish. At Hardy, we've hired special education. At Bishop, we've hired for grade one and special education. At Pierce, we've hired a special, for special education. At Stratton, we've hired for ELL and special education. And district-wide, we've hired a new science director.
Oh, great.
Who will replace Larry Weathers. And we have just hired today, finalized the hire of a elementary science coach. So those are district-wide positions. We've also hired 1.8 FTEs in physical education for the elementary school, some partially replacing current FTEs, but mostly adding FTE based on scheduling needs. We've also, in special education, added a team chair who's replacing a retiring team chair. We still have a lot of positions that are in process to be hired in pretty much almost every school, almost many departments. Some departments are almost fully staffed, but we still need definitely a focus on physical education, art and music at the elementary level. There's some positions that need to be filled based on the schedule changes. Still need to hire some special ed and then other departments as well, district-wide. When I look at the teachers who are leaving, well, some of the questions that come up, and I, I don't want to get too specific because of, you know, I don't want to get into any personnel information, but there are several teachers who are moving away from Arlington. It's not just the commute, they're moving out of state because of a spouse or a partner who's relocating. So we have several teachers who are leaving Arlington for those reasons. More than, I mean, that seems to be the predominant reason, if we took one big reason this year so far. And I hope that we're pretty much done with the resignations, but you never, you never know. There are a couple people who are leaving education completely, going into different careers. There are a couple people who are leaving because of commute, because they do have longer commutes and want to cut that down. And then a couple people are just getting other jobs within education, within the general, general area. I mean, so there's, there's different reasons, but I do think there's, you know, especially with the population as is, exists now in every industry, people are just more mobile. They move around, they don't stay in one place for their lives. So that's why we're, you know, that seems to be a predominant reason why people come and go. And I don't think it has anything to do with Arlington High School or Arlington Public Schools or wherever they're leaving. Are there any other questions about the hiring? It's still, it's, we'll have a more of a bigger update in the fall.
Yeah.
In full disclosure, did you inform the high, new high school teachers the change in time following you?
I'm kidding.
Didn't we're going to tear down the building?
No. They know about the building, definitely.
That could be a draw.
Ms. Morgan?
So in order to move forward on that, so the job description that just came around is not on the agenda, so we can't vote on this one tonight. This is the elementary social studies coach, which in looking at it, because Dr. McNeil sent it to me in advance. sent it to me in advance, we didn't get it through the curriculum subcommittee, just because it didn't happen. It is, the language is identical to the elementary science coach job description, which we approved some time ago. So, what I would like to do is request that we suspend the GCA policy where we have to approve, this is a new position, so we would theoretically need to approve it. It is the same job description with the change from science to social studies. So, I would like, so that he can proceed, because it's not on the agenda, we can't vote on it, so that he can proceed hiring this person, so that they can come and work for us and do all the things we need to do in social studies. I think, I'd like to move that we suspend that.
So, second. Do you need further explanation?
So, there's two votes. There's a vote to suspend the policy, and then, there's a second vote to approve the position.
We can't approve the position. So, we can suspend the policy for that.
We have to approve the position.
Okay, we suspend the policy.
So, I'd wonder if we can suspend the policy that we, for something that we can't vote. I mean, yeah.
I think we want the district to post the thing.
Yeah, I do, I do, I do.
I would have no problem of them proceeding and going ahead, but we take this up as first thing. This is a budget issue. I don't think we have the power to suspend it. I would have no problem allowing them to have the hire and going forward with this. We take it up as a...
So, I looked at the policy, it's pretty clear. They cannot create a position unless there's a position description for it. Only we can approve the position descriptions. So, unless we suspend that policy, they cannot create the position.
But part of this job description is budget, and the state doesn't allow us, I'll go with the consensus of the committee, I'm not going to split this. I have one question on the job description, if I may.
Yes.
On the terms of employment, it says 10 additional days for DM. Who would make that determination?
Well, I think the 10 additional days would be determined by the Director of Social Studies in conjunction with the Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent, whether it's necessary. It could be up to 10 additional days if needed.
I have no problem. I just have an issue with timing. In other words, would we know ahead of time if we're going to need this so that the person doesn't all of a sudden make plans for something, and all of a sudden, we tell them, we need 10 more days?
We would know, I think, in, that we would, whoever we hire, we would inform them that there's possibility that there could be some summer days that are required after the end of the school year, which would be the, like, that's what the standard would be. And that, I think we would be flexible if we hire someone who has planned a vacation for, you know, the middle of July next year, we can work around that. I think we can...
Thank you. Dr. Allison Ampe?
I'll vote in favor of suspending the policy so that we can proceed with hiring this.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify that, it's a temporary suspension for this case only.
Yes, correct. So, the motion is to suspend Policy GCA with respect to the elementary social studies coach.
Yeah, great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Month financial report.
Good evening. Tonight, you have in front of you a financial report for the period ending May 31st, 2019. The report includes the general fund report, which is the town appropriation, also concludes the grant accounts reports and the revolving accounts report. You know, I did extensive report, a little bit more details on what was the trends for the month of April, and most of those trends remain for the month of May. The projected balance is $246,444. And later this evening, there will be some motions that you guys will be voting to approve to move that projected balance into the Special Education Reserve Fund. The grants accounts, we're currently reviewing, reconciling towards the end of the year to see if there's any additional funds that could be drawn down, as well as to make sure the proper charges are on the grants. And we are also currently reconciling. I just want to thank Liz for preparing this report. I was not in this past week, so, but I did review it. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Hader?
On line 87601, court judgment settlement, you're showing a surplus of $102,000, no expenditures during the year. We've been pretty good the past couple of years. Are we carrying a similar budget next year?
Correct. Yes, correct.
I think at some time, the committee has got to look at our history. If, I mean, we've had issues in the past, and it's been necessary, but we've been doing on the positive side of this, the ledge of the past couple of years. So, this may be an area to look at for the budget. Thank you.
I just have one comment, and that is, and we'll discuss in a bit, how we're moving funds from special education, and it's mainly from tuition for out-of-district and contracted transportation, which is 1.1 million in this of savings, basically, that was mostly spent elsewhere. And other than the large energy budget issue, which we've discussed, it's really dispersed, you know, pretty evenly across many accounts. So, my question, though, is sort of, did we intentionally do that because we knew we had money extra, or did that just sort of happen and we got lucky with having the funds to cover in special education?
Can you repeat what you're...
So, if we didn't have that surplus in special education, we would be looking at a significant deficit, right? But the question is from our, you know, and we've been monitoring this, we knew we weren't going to have a deficit because we had that surplus. But was there a decision made that we could overspend in other accounts because we knew we were going to underspend in special education? And I know you got here in the middle of the year and may not have been involved. Or did that just sort of happen, and maybe we need to keep better control of that next year, right? So, there are many accounts that are over.
Yeah. So, I think that the, we do have to do, in terms of going forward, doing a better job at aligning the budget. When developing the fiscal '20 budget, I reviewed the most current completed expenditures from, at that point, which was fiscal '18. And I realigned fiscal '20 budget to align with how departments were spending their funds. So, that will then make this report look a little better in terms of how, in terms of which items are surplus versus which items are in deficit. In terms of, there's the other aspect of, like, expenditures that are going forward, there are things that need to happen, such as keep the lights on, and those expenditures happening, or trying to keep the lots cleared for weather events, or roof flashing issues. And so, you know, the most important thing is, you know, we want to instruct the students and give special needs students the opportunities to have equitable education, but at the same time, make sure that the structures that are in place. And so, sometimes decisions are made to make sure that facilities are running properly. So, I think that some of the, some of it is intentional to make sure the facilities are operating efficiently, and that the students can be in an environment that is engaging for them to be in Arlington.
Sure.
If you look at this, one of the, the budget lines that's gone over is facilities, by well over $800,000, which is a large chunk of this. And it's to this issue, some of it is contractual. For example, the town side negotiates the salaries of people that are in our budget, and those monies, that just becomes out of our budget. There's no, but also, it's the facilities themselves. There was a lot of work that was done. I think that we will be needing to work with whoever becomes the new facilities director next year to have a better process by how projects or maintenance or whatever gets done, so that everybody's in communication about that. So, that was the biggest item that had an effect on this.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so, on to the budget revisions. So, this is, so, the motion, everybody has the motion. I'm not sure everybody has the...
Oh, actually, do you all have a question?
It's left in your desk.
Oh, it's in Novus now?
Looks like three motions.
Do you want to briefly discuss, or present?
That's not...
No, it's in Novus. It is, it is.
It is? All right. All right. Yeah, so, there's a couple of, yeah, I have that chart. So, there's a, in Novus, you'll see that there's the budget transfer category report. So, basically, it's the same report, the monthly report, but it's shown differently based on the budget transfer categories that the school committee approves when they appropriate the budget. And so, the first motion is to approve a set of budget transfers from special education to cover the projected deficits in the other, in the curriculum and instruction budget transfer category, elementary transfer category, the other, which is mostly facilities, and the secondary education budget transfer category. The other motion, which is attached to the other document, which is the proposed additions, this is based on the working document that we looked at previously, that had the initial adds of about a 1.2 million. The town, at the town meeting, there was additional appropriation due to the change of growth fact, the growth rate factor, which 451,500, which the school committee had already voted upon. There's an adjustment in terms of what the original, how we were going to use in that first 451,500, which was for a special education teacher, that special education teacher will come out of the circuit breaker adjustment, and instead, the math interventionist, which was originally part of the Group One proposed additions, is put into that. So, it's an even swap, but they're both still in the plan. In addition, we have increased the assistant principals at all elementary levels by 1.5 to bring to three assistant principals. And we've adjusted, we've added a reserve teacher to bring up the reserve teaching positions to four positions, and an additional reserve teaching assistant. And this motion is actually the third motion will be tied to that, which is to increase the budget by $686,636 for the fiscal '20. And the other motion, which was, the second motion, which was the surplus, which was the $246,444, which was on the monthly report and on the budget transfer cost categories reports, is to move that to the Special Education Reserve Fund, which does not exceed the 2% limit for net school spending.
Questions?
This is exceptionally well laid out and sleek, and I love it. I love that it tells us where the money came from, and that it's really transparent, and it's just beautifully put together. So, thank you so much. Just to be clear, on the assistant principals, we're going to three, we have one FTE right now, we're adding two, there was a .5 someplace, was it in the first bucket from before, or no? So, this is just, so, we have 1.0 currently, and this is a 1.5 add. So, are we at three, or we're at 2.5?
2.5, I missed it, sorry.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
So, again, budget met just before our meeting and had a unanimous motion to recommend all of these three motions to the full school committee to pass.
Any other questions or comments? All right. So, does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the first motion?
Okay, I'm going to, yeah. So, motion that the Arlington School Committee hereby transfer the sum of $104,509.25 from the Special Education Budget Transfer Category into the Curriculum and Instruction Budget Transfer Category. B, transfer the sum of $202,622.34 from the Special Education Budget Transfer Category into the Elementary Education Budget Transfer Category. C, transfer the sum of $881,245.63 from the Special Education Budget Transfer Category into the Other Budget Transfer Category. And D, transfer the sum of $101,446.53 from the Special Education Budget Transfer Category into the Secondary Education Budget Transfer Category.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions unanimous?
Okay. Second motion, that the Arlington School Committee transfer the sum of $246,444 from the Arlington Public Schools FY 2019 appropriated budget transfer category into the Arlington Special Education Reserve Fund established under Article 27 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. B, suffice that the balance of such fund after transfer not exceed 2% of the annual net Arlington Public Schools spending.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed abstentions? Also unanimous.
Okay. And finally, that the Arlington School Committee hereby vote to accept and increase the Arlington Public Schools FY 2020 appropriated budget by $686,636, due to increase of revenue from the town override in the amount of $600,000, and the increase of circuit breaker in the amount of $886,836.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Also unanimous. All right.
Can I speak? One thing, I should have mentioned this when we were discussing the motions, but we did bring up the fact that this money is coming out of the school, out of the special education budget, some of it's going into the reserve. But whether all of it should have gone into the reserve, I think the bottom line is, at this point, we have to balance our budget. And so, it is something that we're aware of. We haven't shorted anyone on their services this year. We had a lucky year in that we didn't have as much expenditures as we had anticipated. But I just, I don't want people to feel like we are shorting special education by doing this.
And it's the transportation budget was a significant portion of that. Lab Collaborative renegotiated a substantially beneficial contract for the member districts, which resulted in significant savings. That was after our budget.
Great. Thank you. All right, that closes the budget items. Okay. Next is the superintendent's report.
I think one of the issues that everyone is interested is where we are with kindergarten numbers at this point in the year, and we are at 514. The other issue is the reserve positions that we had put in the budget. Right now, we know we need a teacher at bracket, but we've known that for a while. It really has evolved so that we are going to need a fourth kindergarten at Stratton. What is not clear yet is, what's not clear is whether we're going to have to have a third kindergarten at Pierce or a fourth kindergarten at Bishop. Right now, the numbers would say no. But this is still June, and we have, our experience is the summer, there can be a lot of changes. So, having the reserve position here is helpful so that we don't have to not hire something else that we had already appropriated in the budget as we go through the summer. We also have... We also have, you know, a backup plan in terms of, you know, how we would do this at Bishop. It's not ideal, but I think that, given all the alternatives, it's the best of all the alternatives. And we would certainly do it in a way that would make it a comfortable experience for everybody. Because I think what would happen is that we would approach the number where we would have four, but maybe in that gray area. That's one of the issues always with kindergarten enrollments is that, you know, at some point, you don't really want to have classes over 25. I mean, those are just way too large. And so, you know, that's the issue. So we're just, we're really monitoring very carefully. We also have applications that are pending. And we have a list, a complete list of what is missing for every pending application. And our registrar has already been calling people. But also, what's very helpful, if anybody's listening to this at this hour, is that if you haven't registered your kindergarten student, please do. I think the message on that has gotten out better than the past, well, the last couple of years. It was that sometimes when people had children in the school, they just said, well, you know, they know my child's coming. And we sort of do, but we can't really put them on a class list. And then all of a sudden, we have the student added during the summer. So that, we're really monitoring those very carefully. And the other issue, I would just encourage parents, I know principals will have already begun to address this, is if you are happening to leave Arlington, please let your school know. You don't need to contact a central registrar. You can, but certainly notifying your school would be very helpful. So this is the last meeting of the school year, and I do want to take this opportunity to, to thank all of the teachers, staff, and administrators for an absolutely great year. When you're going through the year, it seems long and there's a lot of challenges that you face, but I will say that we have a staff that's very competent, dedicated, resilient, and flexible. And I think flexibility is probably one of the most cherished quality in a teacher because they have to be on a daily basis. But we owe a great deal of gratitude to them for their work. And this last month has been very busy, as Nolan knows. But it was good. It was a great year. And I think what's happening now is that teachers are all now getting very emotional about their students leaving. And as students are getting emotional about leaving, so that's all a good sign. That's a very good sign. So, let's see. Check my list here. The last thing I'm gonna say, two last things. The last day of school, I want to remind people, is next Wednesday. And the dismissal is 11:30 and there is no lunch. And kindergarten screenings begin next week on Monday. Tomorrow's the last day for kindergarten. And this is something we discussed a great deal, we set the calendar for this year. So, all the scheduling for screenings has been going on over the last month. And while I can't say it probably often enough and with conviction, I feel, I do want to say that I'm very grateful to everyone who has worked so hard in the district, on the building committee and on the campaign, as well as everyone who voted in support of the high school project. And the override, which as you can see tonight is going to add, have a very positive impact on our schools next year. As a result of Tuesday's vote, we will now be building a high school that will enhance and support the great work of our teachers and students. The new school will provide them with the environment and opportunities for learning that they do not now have. It is an exciting time and a time of great responsibility to build the very best high school for our current APS students that are all the way through to kindergarten and the generations of students to come. I have been thinking about retirement for a while, but with the town committed to building the new high school, I am committed to getting the district through the next phase of the design development and the first year of construction. So I have asked for a two-year extension of my contract with the school committee we'll discuss tonight. And again, I want to thank the Arlington community for just a wonderful show of support this last Tuesday. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence.
I'd like you to hold the trip to San Juan, please.
Okay. Approval of warrant, warrant number 19249 dated June 6, 2019. Total warrant amount 1041078.41. Approval of minutes, school committee regular minutes, June 6, 2019.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any abstentions opposed?
Unanimous.
May I? Sure.
The statement on the agenda says that San Juan moved to October 9th, 14th. If you look at the document, it says, will any school be missed on those days? And it says, no.
Same problem that was last time.
Well, it was originally scheduled this summer.
I understand.
It was a mistake, yeah. There's a couple, it's a week where we have Wednesday as a holiday, and then they'll be gone Thursday, Friday.
This is the document that's going forward?
Why didn't they correct it?
And it was the same issue as last time.
They resubmitted, but they couldn't go this summer. They resubmitted and I don't think they picked up that detail, but I will, they do miss two days.
I think it's important for parents to know how it's, because the next line it says, will any school be missed? If it will be missed, what is the impact and things? These are the documents we have, so thank you.
Sorry about that.
Mrsus?
Oh, just, we brought up last time, so they had two weeks to fix it. I'm just, why didn't they say that?
I don't know.
One week.
I'm sorry, one week. It was only one week, you're right. But it's just weird. Yeah. Okay.
So I will say that, you know, I understand when there's a day before vacation to make the right flight arrangements. I personally don't think scheduling a trip in October when there really is just a religious holiday break, not really a break, is something that we should be advocating as a district. So I'm not going to vote for it, but. Mr. Hayner?
I would support that, too. If, this committee has made a distinction of allowing celebrations or recognition of religious holidays, this in a way, I would agree with you, it has potential to look like we're diminishing the value of it.
That's not really my point. My point is more the missing the school days in the middle of October. Okay.
I see both.
Okay, great. So is there a motion to approve the trip?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Yeah. I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hayner?
Nay.
Nay. No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. Okay. Subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget, anything else to report?
We're collecting items for future agenda. You can let me know if you think of something else we need to discuss.
Any relations?
We met this morning for a recommendation for the Human Rights Committee. So I would like to schedule a meeting in the summer. What we have on our agenda, outreach about calendar issues, outreach about start time issues, potentially a redistricting thing. We are continuing to discuss with, about after school, and there are probably other things. So those are some big, we have to have at least one or two meetings this summer.
Okay. Facilities? Mr. Hayner?
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I reported this time. I apologize.
Policies and procedures? Mr. Sigmund?
No report.
And legal, CIAA, I'm sorry. That's why Bill was not ready. CIAA.
Nothing to report at this time.
Legal services?
Mr. Thielman and I got together and worked out a document and presented it to the superintendent. Superintendent and I have been going back and forth, so, to clarify. And I support the, what the superintendent has said in the interpretation, came strong on the idea to approve the contract, a proposed contract with Stoner, Chandler, and Miller. There was a recommendation about in-service professional development. The superintendent recommended, and I would agree, that it needs a little tweaking because it implies that we're going to have attorneys coming out, talking to every teacher throughout the year. We don't have the time for it, we don't have the money for it. We need to work out something that gets those services and that information to the staff. So I guess I'll be working with a superintendent or somebody to work that out. But I would recommend to the committee, once we have a document, to go forward with the continuation with Stoner, Chandler, and Miller.
Okay. So I do think we need to have an extension agreement with them. Our current agreement expires June 30th, so.
We do. We should have an extension agreement. Do you want to, I thought we were gonna?
Well, we don't have an actual document tonight for us to have looked at. Go forward with the, I would recommend to the committee that we go forward with what we have right now. Come to an agreement in September, and if there has to be any proration, we can deal with it at that time.
I don't think that there's anything in the language you were going to suggest that would be something that they don't already do. It's just putting language in to codify that they already do this. So I don't think there'd be any objection on their part whatsoever. So I would ask for an extension, because we use their services quite regularly.
So, I mean, I think we need a motion to authorize a superintendent to enter into a temporary extension until we convene again.
So move.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right. I will let them know.
Okay. Building committee, we're meeting tomorrow on a Friday night?
4:00 P.M.
4:00 P.M. Friday afternoon. All right.
For the Sabbath. We're meeting at 4:00 P.M. And we'll be, first of all, we're very grateful for the vote. I want to echo what the superintendent said. Very grateful and relieved and thankful to everybody who worked so hard on the campaign. And tomorrow at 4:00 o'clock, we meet, we'll be talking about the contractor and we'll probably announce it then.
Oh, good.
Awesome. Great. And liaison reports. Any announcements? Future agenda items?
I would like to meet the new science director.
Oh, of course, yeah. At some point. New science director, yeah. So, only had partial participation in the doodle about the summer meeting, but it looked like August 4th, the week of August 4th, not the date of August 4th. The week of August 4th, is there anybody who's going to be out of town that entire week?
August 4th, yes. I'm out that week.
Okay.
Plans are still up in the air.
Okay. So we will still look for a meeting, a time to have a meeting in August or possibly late July if we have to. And if we can do remote participation, if people want. But I, I'll keep you posted as we move into the summer. Okay. Anything else? Future agenda items? Okay. Executive session. To discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, FERPA, and the Massachusetts Student Record Law. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. The AEA paraprofessional MOA. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or conduct negotiations with non-union personnel. Contact with Kathleen Bodie, superintendent. We will be returning to open session when we conclude executive session. Can I have a motion to move to executive session?
So move.
Second. Roll call?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. All right. And we are back. The Arlington School Committee is back from executive session. The first item on our agenda now is the AEA professional memorandum of understanding regarding contract. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I move we accept the agreement and authorize the chair to execute it.
Can we just be a little specific between?
I move we approve the agreement between the Arlington School Committee and the AEA paraprofessional unit and authorize the chair to sign it on our behalf.
Second. All right. So I think, speaking for the committee, where it was a very long process. A lot of people worked very hard on it. There are negotiation members, members for the administration, and members of the bargaining team, and we are thrilled that we have been able to reach an agreement with our paraprofessionals for the first time. And they will have professional status, they will have higher salaries, they will have lots of benefits, and it's long overdue, in my opinion. So, any other discussion? Mrsus?
Oh, just to say that it's testament to the goodwill of this entire committee that there was no objection at all to their initial request to unionize and that we unanimously supported that. And we went into negotiations with that backing.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Thank you. And next is the superintendent's contract. So, do you have any? Go ahead.
So I move that we accept or offer a two-year contract extension to Dr. Kathleen Bodie.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Mr. Hayner?
As an elected member of the Arlington School Committee, I believe that my prime responsibility is to be an advocate for the best and fiscally responsible school program for the children of Arlington. The state has mandated three areas that the school committees, that are the school committee's responsibility. Policy, which establishes procedures and rules that have not been mandated by the federal or state government in running a school. The budget, to vote and advocate to the town, a fiscally and educationally responsible budget to run the school district. Hiring, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, special education director, and the chief financial officer. The school's committee's policy requires that we notify the superintendent six months prior to the end of the employment contract if the committee intends to renew or wants to change the existing contract. The committee met in December of 2018 but could not come to consensus. So by mutual agreement with the committee and the superintendent, we have been in negotiations since that time. I was willing since last December to support a one-year extension on the superintendent's current contract to allow for a smooth transition. I cannot support anything beyond this time for the following reasons. The superintendent runs the system with a reactive rather than proactive approach to education and hiring. I do not believe the superintendent understands elementary education. Took several years to get full-day kindergarten even after it was shown to be financially neutral. With continued pressure from parents, the superintendent now supports full-time aides in the kindergarten. She had resisted creating these positions based on finance rather than the understanding that early intervention is not only educationally beneficial, but identifying and remediating educational problems, early results, and lower costs, and the child's later education. She has consistently supported class size based on physical number of students rather than looking at the data that supports class size being based on psychological and behavioral makeup. This year's budget will be the first budget that actually is funding for school librarians at the elementary level in over 10 years. There is still no line item in our budget for library books at the elementary level. She expects principals to fund this from their building She expects principals to fund this from their building budget. She has no understanding or appreciation of an integrated library and classroom curriculum. She resisted the repurposing of the Gibbs School by suggesting modular units to deal with the overcrowding at the Odysseum School. It took consistent pressure from parents and factual information from the architects we hired to change her position. I am and continue to be impressed with the staff, but as in all situations, there are hires that don't meet expectations, or the behavior of individuals are called into question. There have been situations where the superintendent has either not acknowledged or allowed situations to escalate to a point where the bellic gets involved, to the detriment of all. Rather than accept a mistake was made in the hiring, she denied the problem, and it was only resolved, only when the facts became irrefutable. There are, but these are but a few examples of reactive superintendent. Regarding the differences in the one- or two-year extension, some members of the committee will say that we need the superintendent to continue for the next two years to provide continuity into the beginning of initial construction. I would suggest this superintendent is not the right person for the job. The superintendent has only been involved in one MSBA project, the Thompson School, and that project needed an addition within two years. At the time, the superintendent stated that the reason for the Thompson School is overcrowded is because the MSBA would not allow us to build a proper school. The facts do not support that, and I have already stated this in a prior statement given to the committee. Rather than advocate for the dead exclusion at that time, the superintendent felt that we could make do. What resulted is the disruption of a brand-new school while six additional classes were added on. This is not the approach we need in a brand-new high school. There are a lot of retired superintendents who have actual building experience with MSBA projects that could be hired as a consultant and allow the new superintendent to focus primarily on the district. I want my superintendent to be proactive advocate for the Arlington school system. I want my superintendent to be knowledgeable with current and cutting-edge education programs at all grade levels. I want my superintendent to be fiscally responsible, but not let the dollar be the first consideration in evaluating the need for more staff on new programs. I want my superintendent to be self-assured and able to admit a mistake. As I stated earlier, I am willing to support a one-year extension on the superintendent's contract. I cannot support anything beyond that, and I will be voting no on a two-year extension.
Thank you. Dr. Alton Hampe?
Okay. First, I strongly disagree with much of what my colleague said, but I'm not going to use my time here now to do that. I would point out that I don't think any superintendents come with a crystal ball, and I think a number of the things he was asking for would request that. I am voting for a two-year contract, because I feel that Dr. Bodie's leadership for the next two years is the best choice for Arlington. Dr. Bodie has presided over our district for the past years, as we've increased in size by over 20 percent, more than any other metro Boston community. In my opinion, her cooperative style of leadership has greatly, has helped to greatly improve our relationship with the Arlington Education Association, as exemplified by our recent negotiations. She's been steadfast in her desire to see the Arlington Public Schools improve, and her exemplary educational leadership and outstanding choices in hiring additional staff, including our curriculum leaders, have made this possible. Additionally, under her leadership, the AHS building project was brought forward and has successfully progressed. In asking for a two-year contract in anticipation of her retirement, Dr. Bodie has given our community a very generous gift. She will oversee the first year of high school construction, one of the most tumultuous times of the project, and have it ready for a clean handoff. She allows us to plan for a smooth transition and makes it possible for the community to fully participate in our eventual search. I applaud Dr. Bodie's decision and enthusiastically vote yes for extending her contract for the next two years.
Ms. Seuss?
I don't have prepared remarks. I want to thank Dr. Bodie for her leadership. I think that she has especially created a district where teachers and administrators feel valued, which I think is very important. I also want to thank you for the time, I think, that a two-year period will give the committee and give our community the time that we need to do a search that we will feel really good about.
Mr. Thielman?
I want to thank Kathy for agreeing to be our superintendent for two more years. These are two real pivotal years in the building project. There are a lot of important things that are going to happen. The first year of actual construction is a year in which you have to put in place many systems for communication between the school department, the high school, and the construction team. There are a lot of logistical issues that would, that would take up quite a bit of time for a new superintendent and make it very challenging for him or her to connect with the community and build relationships with the district and also manage a project. So I am, from a logistics, from a building committee perspective, I am very grateful that Kathy is willing to serve our children for two more years. Secondly, Dr. Bodie has been involved in our district as an administrator for about 20-plus years, and she's been our superintendent for 11 years, and that gives a district great stability. Paul and I both have interfaced with other districts around the state and the country where there's constant turnover, and that actually trickles down and negatively impacts teaching and learning. So the fact that we can have a superintendent for this long is a gift to the town of Arlington, and I'm grateful to Kathy for that gift. I'm grateful for Kathy's leadership of our teachers. She has selected high-quality staff who have stayed for many years. She's built a great administrative team. She's hired some wonderful principals, wonderful teachers, department heads, and so I am grateful that Kathy's going to spend two more years with us, and I look forward to working with her in those two years.
Mr. Schuckman?
You know, there is no such thing as the perfect superintendent. Nobody is exemplary at everything, but if we take a look at this as a glass half-full, half-empty kind of thing, our glass is more than half-full. She does a lot of things well, and she has done a lot of things well. And in the context of my experience of the district first being elected in 2001, she is the third Arlington superintendent I've served with, and I'm very clear in saying that she's the best that I have served with on this committee. She came in and took over this district at a time of great turmoil, stabilized it and moved it forward. This is a better district now than it was when she took office, both in terms of the way this administration relates to the community, both in the instruction in the schools and the reputation of the schools, the curriculum in the schools. We have moved forward considerably, and there's no doubt about that. And I think that if we go into the community and ask what they think of the schools now compared to where we were 10 years ago, 15 years ago, I think it'd be almost unanimous that we are in a much, much better place. And the confidence this community had in us, both in terms of the building project and the override, with a two-to-one vote for the override and a three-to-one vote for a very expensive high school project, are testament to the faith that this community has in the leadership of this district. I think a couple of remarks that were made that I just want to clarify, that any budget is our budget. The superintendent can only make recommendations. It's our budget, our vote. We take responsibility for what's in the budget and what's not. It is not the superintendent's responsibility. And in any time since we unfortunately had to lay off the librarians in 2004, when Mitt Romney cut our local aid by 20 percent, we, if we had reprioritized, we could have made changes there. When I first came back in 2012, we were in the midst of redistricting because the state mandated it, because one of the contingencies of state funding for the Thompson project was that they expected the school to be filled. We were worried about that. We adjusted the boundary lines for the districting toward the west for the hope of bringing in more students from Arlington Center, moving them towards the Odysseum, rather, towards the Thompson. Who knew what was about to happen? Because when we started that project, we were in the midst of a real estate depression after the 2008 crash. Just after we opened, that was the point where the enrollment of this town started to surge. And since, in the past six years, we've had a 21 percent increase in enrollment, and I don't think anybody in 2012 would have expected anything of that nature. We have moved forward. We, look at the people that are sitting to her right. These are great administrators. We've hired well. We've hired great principals. Not every hire works out. You can't expect somebody to bat a thousand, but we've hired some really good people who work together in a cooperative, collaborative manner, and she has worked diligently to put together all the pieces from the administrative side to get the school building proposal to this point. I'm quite happy with her performance. I'm happy she's staying. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
So I'm going to vote against the two-year contract. I would have supported a one-year contract, but I can't do two. I am the most junior, junior, junior member of this school committee, which sometimes I think is to my detriment, but I think that in this situation, you know, part of being elected to the school committee and part of deciding to run is a process of connecting with the community, having a lot of coffees at Kickstand and Cafe Nero, and meeting with other elected officials, community leaders, people on the town side, parents, and they're, the common thread through all of those conversations is that they are ready for a change in leadership, and they're ready for a different direction. The time is now, or the time could have been a year from now, but, you know, it's, that's not the will of this, of the majority of this committee, and while, you know, however, it's, you know, it's not necessarily a robust endorsement that we're putting forward tonight. You know, I accept what we're deciding. I believe in democracy. I'm good at math and believe in majority, so I'm going to do my best to continue this work that we're going to do together for two years, and so that we can ensure the best outcomes for the kids who we're all here to support.
And I just have a few points to make about my vote. As others have said, hiring and deciding whether to retain the superintendent is one of the few core activities of school committees in Massachusetts since education reform was passed in 1993. With three-year contracts generally the norm, it's something we only do every three years. As we make these rare decisions, I believe we need to look beyond how well an incumbent superintendent is performing and look, as we would if there were a vacancy, at what are the qualities we would like for our superintendent, and what are the district needs for the next few years. I will also be voting against the contract, and I also believe it is time for new leadership of the district, and that we should proceed to make this change over the next 12 months rather than two years. The superintendency is one of these odd public, odd positions where decisions about your performance and tenure are made by an elected body in public. It can be awkward and uncomfortable, but it is the situation anyone wanting to serve a superintendent and fully understand that they'll experience. I don't think it's beneficial for me to go into detail. I believe it's time for change. I think it's sufficient that I state that at this point in time, the Arlington Public Schools would benefit from a leader with more, with a more proactive and strategic focus. As Ms. Morgan has mentioned, this is something that's shared by other people in town, it's not just something that I came up with on my own. I know Dr. Bodie works tirelessly for our schools, and my colleagues have heightened some of her many accomplishments over the last few years. I know she will continue to excel over the next two years, and I look forward to working with her, but I do personally think that it's time for a change, and I can't support delaying the change for a year longer than necessary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Why don't we do a roll call? Mr. Hayner?
No.
Yes.
Dr. Alton Hampe?
Yes.
Ms. Seuss?
Yes.
Mr. Schuckman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
And I vote no.
I move we authorize the chairman to execute the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hayner?
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.